The October 2nd, 2023 legislation session of the Annapolis County Council's called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. We will now kick off the invocation, and Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Pickard will lead us in the invocation.
Good evening. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of bettering ourselves and our community. May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us. May we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities. And the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Hammer?
They're not here yet.
Okay. Sorry, I just wasn't quite ready. Give me one second. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
We'll now open our invitation to the audience. So this is a segment in our meeting where this opportunity to speak briefly on any subject that's not on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I see a couple folks who have signed up in advance. So at this time, can we have, is that Lily Ellis? Lily Ellis? Is she here? And Deborah Spencer? All right, going once, going twice. All right. Is there anyone who did not sign up in advance who would like to come up at this moment and speak on any subject that is not on the printed agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. Matt Minahan, Growth Action Network, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater. I'm coming with two observations that I hope the council will listen to with care and not immediately object. The first is watching last week's votarama on the amendments on parole. I was struck with the fact that amendments get posted at 6:00 and can be voted on that same night and approved. And I was struck with how exclusive that is of any voices in support or opposition. Seems to me that amendments ought to have a two-week period or window when they are posted. Advocates and opponents can speak up, come to the council before a vote. So I'm encouraging you to think through your business process on this and to consider opening the window for citizen observation and comment, particularly on amendments. But I understand that's also true of legislative matters as well. The bills can be introduced and voted on on the same night. My second request to the council is there have been something like 88 text amendments to the code in the last three years. These are all special interests who have come to you and said, "I have a special problem. Please fix it." And while I appreciate the fact that you're being responsive to your citizens and constituents, the fact is, this distorts the code with all of these one-off cases being embedded into the code that applies to the whole county. Article 18 is being rewritten. My request to the council, in the interest of good government, is to suspend any text amendments until the OPZ has finished its rewrite of the code. Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson?
Hi. Julie Johnson, POB 6634 Annapolis, Maryland. I have a lot to say, and I'm afraid some of it's going to annoy you. And the first thing is, I would certainly second Matt's comments about code. I came tonight because I'm concerned about Region 7 and the changes in, you know, the coming changes in the zone. I live on Ridgely Avenue, so I don't think it's peculiar that I would be concerned about what's happening on Ridgely Avenue. It's called the Ridgely Avenue Corridor. And on April, at the April meeting of the Stakeholders Advisory Committee, the committee voted unanimously that, no, we won't do any more zoning changes, or, you know, no more commercial. And then magically, one of the members brought up the concept of village overlay. We need a village overlay. Well, wait a second, what's a village overlay? Well, as it turns out, when you look at the drawings, here are pictures that are labeled SB, 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 and, you know, there are four of them in a row. And you find out, well, that means small business. Well, then you look up small business, and that turns out that it is a zoning, you know, identity for those communities that are transitioning from residential to commercial. Well, shoot, man, to me, that says, hey, carte blanche, now that I'm small business, I have, you know, a get out of jail free or become, you know, commercial, right there. Now, maybe I've misunderstood this, but I would certainly request that you take a look at it. Another problem with, you know, the Ridgely Avenue Corridor is that the Office of Planning and Zoning carefully mailed out letters to something around 370 people who live north of Route 50 and east of Besse Gate Road. Well, you go over the Route 50 overpass, you know, on the south side, I'm only four houses down the road, but I didn't get a letter. I got no notice. And so to conclude this part, you know, there's an issue about adequate notice of the people who are dramatically impacted.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Please return your seats. All right. The public hearing, the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any items, any council member would like to place on the printed agenda? All right, seeing none. I'm sorry. I actually have something that I put on there. So for, I would like to, for co-sponsor on Resolution 4123, as well as Resolution 4223, if you can put me down as a co-sponsor on both of those pieces of legislations, I would like that, too. Just wanted to make that public announcement, so folks were aware. And now, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Sir, second.
Rodvian, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of September 18, 2023.
Minutes of September 18, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith and was followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes on September 18, 2023?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second. Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to Bill 7123.
All right. Motion carries. The minutes of September 18, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 7823, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Subdivision, and Development, Zoning, Essential Worker Housing Act, Axis Act of 2023.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 4423, Resolution Supporting the Annapolis County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2025 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction. Resolution number 4523, Resolution Approving the Application of Land Preserve LLC to Sell an Agricultural Land Preservation Easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 126.235 Acres in Davidsonville, Maryland.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 6423.
Bill number 6423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Parole Town Center, Parole Town Center Master Plan.
Mr. Baron?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. 6423 is the Parole Town Center Master Plan. We've discussed it a couple of times at this point. Administration wants to thank everybody that's put in a ton of work on this, the stakeholders, the community, our councilwoman from the district, as well as all the staff that have drafted and worked through all the amendments. We have a few more coming tonight, I believe, so I'll close our comments there after I introduce the two folks at the table with me, Ms. Pampa and Ms. Kenny. Happy to answer any questions or ready to discuss the amendments if the council desires. Thanks.
Any further discussion from the council? No lights. We'll now open a public hearing on Bill number 6423. Madam Secretary, did we receive the testimony, any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
I don't see anyone signed up for 6423. Is there anyone in your audience who wishes to speak on Bill number 6423? All right, seeing no movement, public hearing on Bill 6423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 6423.
Bill number 6423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Parole Town Center, Parole Town Center Master Plan.
Let's see, we got a couple of amendments. Please read Amendment number 18.
Amendment number 18, this amendment allows indoor rifle, pistol, skeet, and archery ranges in the parole town center.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I'm going to talk about the amendment, but I just want to add one thing about our process and why amendments work the way they do with respect to some comments that we just heard. So to be clear, when an amendment comes out, it amends a bill if it is adopted. So we put the amendments out, people see them, and then we vote on the amendment up or down. But the amended bill itself isn't voted on the same night. That never happens. There's always a two-week period. If there is an amendment that changes a bill that ultimately makes the bill unpalatable, at that point, there is an opportunity, a two-week period at least, where folks can comment on that, give us their feedback, and say, this has ultimately changed the bill, et cetera. So I take issue with the idea that there's not public input on amendments because we know what they are and we tend to vote on them, but then the public sees the amended bill after that. So with that, this is an example of more amendments that are coming to this bill that's already been amended almost 17 times. With that, this amendment comes out of our discussion at the last meeting where we were talking about whether or not we should prohibit outdoor rifle, pistol, skeet, archery ranges. Ultimately, by a vote of 1 to 6, this council said, we are not going to prohibit outdoor ranges for those types of activities. And this further now brings the parole town center in line with some other areas in the county and says you could actually have indoor rifle, pistol, skeet, or archery ranges in the parole town center. This does not mean that it's open season and people can just walk around open carrying firearms and do whatever they want. What it actually means is that, just as with any other use, anyone who wants to use a part of the parole town center master plan areas to do one of these uses would obviously need to submit their plans to Planning and Zoning. There would need to be the appropriate meeting of all of the code criteria. And ultimately, if it was deemed that they had met the criteria and were able to do the use the way that they wanted to, then they would have an opportunity to go ahead and move forward with that. So I think this increases choice for the residents of parole town center. It gives them the opportunity to have these types of activities that are available in other parts of the county, and it makes, in our goal to try to make these communities both places to live and to work and to play, it gives all of these opportunities in the parole town center. So with that, I'd ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Let Better.
Mr. Baron?
I'd actually like to hear from Councilwoman Rodvian first. I know you were contemplating a similar amendment, and I was just trying to find it in the packet.
I think it's 22, Amendment number 22.
22, okay.
And I would like to hear first from the Office of Law. Because the way this amendment is written, without actually looking at how all the pieces of the code fit, I want to make sure that I understand what this amendment does. Because I have in my notes, in one place, that this amendment eliminates the prohibition on both indoor or outdoor rifle, pistol, skeet, or archery ranges. And I just want to make sure, is that correct? Or is it only eliminating the prohibition on indoor?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. So the amendment that you have coming up, Amendment number 22, would actually do partially what this amendment does as well, because your amendment and this amendment would both allow indoor rifle ranges in the parole town center. What this amendment does not do, and what your amendment does, is yours would prohibit outdoor ranges in the parole town center. This one would by default actually allow them because they're not listed as a prohibited use right now. So they actually both do the same thing in that they allow indoor rifle ranges in parole town center.
But to be clear, this one allows outdoor rifle ranges to go forward as a permitted use because the bill is already written that way. And Amendment 22 narrows it to indoor rifle ranges? I just, I want to make sure.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Sorry. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Right now, the bill is actually silent on outdoor ranges. So by default, the bill as written technically would allow outdoor ranges in the zones that they're allowed in because it's not in the list of prohibited uses. So this amendment would still continue to do that because there's no change with regard to outdoor.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I want to take my question back to the sponsor. Is that how you intended this amendment to read?
I intend it for indoor or outdoor, depending on whether they can meet the criteria that Planning and Zoning is requiring them to meet. So if they can meet all the code requirements and they can do it, then I think they should be able to do indoor or outdoor, depending on if they can meet the requirements or not. If they can't, then they obviously can't go there.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I hope there's a balance that we can come to an agreement in Amendment number 22, but I can't support outdoor ranges in the Annapolis Town Center area. I mean, I can't even tell you how frequently on the Eastport Neighborhood Chat we hear, "Did someone hear gunshots? Did someone hear gunshots?" And it's alarming how frequent it is. We have a gun violence problem in District 6 and in the city of Annapolis, and extraneous sounds, the remote, I know a range operator is going to be very, very careful and conscientious, but even the remote possibility of stray bullets, I think, is just not going to be palatable to District 6. So I will oppose this amendment, but hopefully if this one doesn't get the votes, hopefully we can at least come together on 22.
Do you have a comment to your...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding outdoor ranges, Ms. Kenny, you're saying that the way that this bill is written, outdoor ranges would be allowed in parole town center as a special exception? Because that's how we, I believe, have outdoor ranges currently.
Yes, in any zone where they're allowed as a special exception, that zone is in the parole town center, it would be allowed. And I think that may have been an oversight in the bill. I'm not sure that there was ever an intent to allow them.
Okay, Mr. Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Please.
So in the chart in our code, we have rifle, pistol, skeet, or archery ranges as special exception in RA and R1. How would that work with this bill?
I don't think there's any RA, or, there's no RA, or, I'm looking at Ms. Pampa, no RA or no R1 in the parole town center.
So by default, they wouldn't be allowed?
That may be, if there are no other zones where it's allowed. There are allowed in commercial? There, just to state that for the record, she did verify, Ms. Pampa verified, that they are allowed in C3 and C4. Correct?
Christina Pampa with OPZ, one of them's allowed in C3 and one of them is allowed in C4. Both of them are special exception. And we do have those zones within the parole town center.
Mr. Better?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I want to talk about this amendment, right? Not 22, which we're not there yet. So the bill that was drafted by the administration that was brought down to this council did not prohibit outdoor rifle, pistol, skeet, archery ranges. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And there was an amendment at the last meeting that would have prohibited outdoor rifle, pistol, skeet, archery ranges in the parole town center that came in front of this body. And by a vote of 1 to 6, we said, no, we're not going to prohibit outdoor ranges. That's correct, right?
I believe the amendment last time prohibited all of them. I have to look back to be sure.
Did it have all of them? I thought it was just outdoor. Okay. All right, so it was all of them.
Yes.
And we voted no for that. So now, this amendment only says you're allowed to have indoor. But if this amendment were to fail, and this bill were to just continue on as it is, outdoor is currently allowed, right?
That's right.
Right. So all this amendment is doing is allowing indoor. This amendment isn't opening up something to outdoor, right?
Yes, I agree with that. And if I didn't state that clearly, I apologize, that outdoor was never prohibited in the bill.
Right. I think you said it clearly, but I think sometimes it's not always clear when we start to discuss amongst ourselves.
Well, I do have a question. You mentioned earlier that, so just to recap, two weeks ago, when the amendment came up, the reason I was opposed to it was because it prohibited indoor. And I was looking for indoor access, because I even talked about the hatch or the axe drawing. There are businesses, restaurants who have axe drawing and they serve food, and why would that not be allowed? I was specifically looking for an indoor capability. Now, you just mentioned that because it was silent on, with this amendment, because it's silent on the outdoor, it would still be allowed. Does, so if this amendment passes, will outdoor be allowed?
Outdoor would be allowed, yes, in the zones where it is allowed.
Okay. If this amendment passes, it would be allowed. If it can meet the underlying zoning, if you meet the criteria, etc. Correct. And two weeks ago, her amendment was getting rid of all of it. Part of the reason, at least my motivation, was I want it indoor. I didn't necessarily care about outdoor. I wanted to protect indoor. So that's where, that's why I voted the way I did two weeks ago. And I'm not sure if there was any confusion, or that was my motivation for supporting that amendment. But I see...
So I...
Oh, I think Ms. Rodvian had her light on first. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think my concerns, my concern stems still, I still have a concern, even despite all the things that you said, because of how the order in which these amendments will take effect. So if 18 is passed, then there is no, the language that Amendment number 22 would amend is no longer in the bill. And so that makes 22 not possible, if I'm correctly understanding how this would work.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, Mr. Legislative Council, can correct me if I'm wrong, but the last amendment should prevail. So your amendment would basically override this amendment if this one were to pass?
Even if the prior amendment had already taken out language, that Amendment number 22 would still, would be amending? If that makes sense?
Yes.
Like 18 takes it out, but then 22 doesn't have the same thing to amend? Because it's been removed by 18?
That's my understanding, correct, Mr. Bennett? Okay. Just making sure, yes. Yours would prevail.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is that better?
I'm going to ask what is a very similar question, but from the other direction. If Amendment number 18 before us now fails, we haven't gotten to 22 yet, so we're not going to talk about that, but just right now, in this moment in time, if 18 fails, the way the legislation is written can outdoor, would outdoor ranges be permitted, assuming they meet the special exceptions?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, yes, that's correct.
So whether 18 passes or fails, the effect on outdoor ranges is the same?
Right, doesn't change.
Nothing, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions on, oh, Mr. Baron, I know you said you wanted to wait. Did you have any remarks?
Nothing to add. I think the administration was uncomfortable with allowing outdoor ranges. Even though it was an oversight when we introduced the bill, we supported the amendment at the last meeting, particularly around outdoor. Spoiler alert, we will support allowing indoor in the upcoming amendment, but I think we would side with Councilwoman Rodvian that outdoor just isn't appropriate in the parole town center.
All right, seeing no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Ms. Hammer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Nay.
3 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative, Amendment number 18 has been defeated.
Please read Amendment number, let me scroll back up here, number 19.
Amendment number 19, this amendment provides that a conservation public benefit for the parole town center incentive program may be a site designed to meet the criteria to obtain leadership in energy and environmental design LEED certification.
All right, Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So basically, this amendment is needed or intended because the stage at which OPZ is looking at a project, there is no way that that project could have obtained the LEED certification. They can, however, lay out all the steps that will require, or that they will follow in order to get that certification ultimately. And so the idea here is that OPZ can sort of give that credit, give that incentive, if the criteria that will ultimately be needed to get LEED certification are met by the design and the plan at that point in the process. And I hope that's helpful. Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Baron?
Administration supports this, I think we would characterize it as a minor technical fix that comes out of the discussion with stakeholders. Please support.
Any additional comments from council members? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Ms. Hammer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
7 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, Amendment number 19 has been adopted.
All right, please read Amendment number 20.
Amendment number 20, this amendment changes the requirement for noise mitigation from all development to residential development or non-residential development with activity spaces, and requires noise to be at certain levels for residential development and at certain levels where possible for non-residential activity spaces.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So this amendment is really intended to take away the burdensome nature of what's in, currently in the bill, and to make the noise mitigation a little bit more sort of realistic and comparable with similar places. So this amendment specifies that the noise provisions in parole only apply to residential and non-residential development adjacent to US 50 and Maryland 665, Aristie Allen Boulevard, and, which becomes, oh my goodness, I'm blanking, this is terrible. Aristie Allen turns into Forest, 65, Forest Drive. My apologies, I just had a blank. Similar to the current legislation, it requires certain noise levels to be met for residentially occupied space and residential activity space. For non-residential development, it only requires the non-residential activity space meet those noise level where it's possible. So this allows some flexibility for the developers to try and reach that threshold, but if there are logistical things that really make it not possible, this allows them to, you know, sort of bypass this requirement with the input of OPZ. And so, motion to adopt Amendment... of OPZ. And so, motion to adopt Amendment Number 20.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I think this is, comes out of the discussions with the stakeholders. It's a minor technical fix to allow additional flexibility. We think this is a good idea. We support.
My question is maybe to the sponsor or to the table. The decibel readings, is that like a standard number that's in there, the 66 and 45?
Go for it.
Christina Pompa with OPZ. Yes, there are other sections in the code that have noise provisions, and this mirror them.
Okay.
What happened is, we, it really was a little more onerous, because non-residential wasn't in the other parts of the code being held to this highest standard. So it does give the developer a little more flexibility if, in fact, they can't design the site, or they have an oddly shaped site where they do end up with some activity space in a non-residential situation adjacent to one of these bigger roads with more noise.
Sure. All right, any other comments from council members? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 20 has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number 21.
Amendment Number 21, this amendment removes Westfield Annapolis Mall and part of the Annapolis Plaza properties from the Pearl North District subarea, and adds them to the core subarea.
Ms. Rodvian?
So I think that description that Ms. Corby read is right on point, and basically just expands the core, puts the Annapolis Mall area and the other shopping center, Annapolis Plaza, into the core. And this is, I think, an important amendment, because if you are thinking about the Annapolis Mall, it is a mall currently in transition. It's in the process of finding its new self. And being in the core will give it more flexibility to, you know, be the kind of space, to have the flexibility to be the kind of space that will allow the community the best use of the space. So, motion to adopt, and I ask for your support.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a good amendment. We support. There is some heft in this amendment. This is not a minor or technical fix. But after discussions with the stakeholders, OPZ, the sponsor of the amendment, as well as representatives from the mall, we think this is a very good idea.
And that's what Exhibit A does, is it moves that portion into the map?
It expands the core slightly.
Check.
Actually, could I add one little piece of information for the record? I don't know if anyone here, anyone listening, has specific concerns about the residential on Parker Drive, residential area on Parker Drive, which is adjacent to, it's sort of adjacent to a property that's adjacent to the mall. This amendment still leaves a buffer. So that core area will not go all the way up to the Parker Drive residential community. And I know that's something the community was concerned about, is having the mall immediately abut their neighborhood. And this will still leave, and I believe, what, Ms. Pompa, are you able to help me remember? What is, there's something very innocuous on it. Is it a stormwater pond? Or a fountain, or something like that?
Yes. Christina Pompa with OPZ. There are two stormwater ponds in the northeast portion of the mall property, and they do abut the Parker Drive community. By keeping those areas in the Pearl North District, there's a lower building height in that district. And also, if a developer were to, if the mall were to use the incentive program, there are much higher building heights permitted in the core. And so this helps to buffer, by keeping those areas in Pearl North, it helps to buffer with building height no taller than six stories adjacent to Parker Drive.
Thank you. I ask for your support.
Mr. Volkey?
So how tall can the mall go if it goes from the north into the core?
In the Pearl North District, the height, the maximum height is six stories.
Well, but in the core, how much is it? If they go from the north to the core?
To eight.
So eight, so they get next to two.
And then you have to still look at the incentive program, which for the core would allow it to go to 12 stories, or 16 stories, if significant. It would have to be very significant. But the difference is that we have, remember, we have a little bit of a governor on the height if it's adjacent to property outside of the town center and in the RA, RLD, R1, R2, or R5 zoning district. So the core is not, the core doesn't have any restrictions, but Pearl North does. So the building height, it's six by right, it's six with the incentive program, if it's adjacent to a residentially zoned property outside of the town center.
But if it's not, then it's 16?
For the core?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, 16, but they would have to have, it can go to 12, 16 if it's significant.
Okay. And can I follow up another question? Thank you. What is the residential change going from north to core? Like, does that give any additional incentives where there's some kind of mixed-use opportunity that could exist for the Westfield site that allows them then to put residential in where they couldn't before? Anything like that?
No.
Okay. So it's just a height issue?
Not necessarily height. I mean, it is more flexibility all around. And yes, I mean, they can have a larger building.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, seeing no additional lights, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number 21 has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number 22.
Amendment Number 22, this amendment replaces the prohibition on indoor rifle, pistol, skeet, and archery ranges in the Pearl Town Center with an outdoor prohibition.
Ms. Rodvian?
So based on the conversation we had last week with a similar amendment, it seemed quite clear that the council was comfortable with indoor ranges and not outdoor ranges. And so this amendment attempts to put that conversation into the final law. So with that, I ask for your support and move motion, excuse me, move Amendment Number 22.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Baron?
As the previous discussion indicated, the administration supports this amendment. It makes sense to allow the indoor activities, as we've discussed several times now.
Any additional questions, council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pompa, I'm so impressed with how quickly you say what special exception, commercial areas are, and what those, I mean, you just know that like the back of your hand. So I'm going to go to you with this question. Trying to look at our zoning map, and then overlay that with the Pearl Town Center map that we have in this bill. Do you know where the C4s are located? I'm seeing around the Housley Defense Highway area, and then maybe one in the northern section. Does that sound accurate?
It does, but I would really need to be looking at the zoning map to tell you with confidence. But yes, I believe there's some C4 north of Best Gate, and in the areas you said, Housley and Defense.
And some of these areas, it does look like there's development already, residential development. And obviously, in a town center, you're going to have a development component. Is that accurate?
Will you repeat that for me?
Just looking at those C4 areas, I do see some existing communities, it looks like. One in particular that is wedged right in the middle of a C4 area, already established community with homes on the properties. So you have residential there, abutting C4. And then residential would obviously be a component of a town center, mixed-use type development.
Correct.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
For outdoor ranges in commercial districts, the special exceptions, there's no distance requirement from a residential property that I can tell in the code, or the special exception requirements.
I don't know if we know that off the top of our head. I think Ms. Kenny's pulling up the code.
I mean, I'm looking at the code, and it talks a lot about, for outdoor ranges in commercial zones, it talks about the baffling, the distance between firing points and the target pit, backstops, what those should be constructed of. But I don't see anything about distance. And the reason why I ask this, I'm asking these questions, is because I did a bill for indoor ranges in my first term, and there was discussion about the distance between a residential lot and an indoor range. And there's a distance there. So I just noticed, as we're talking about what the special exceptions would be, there's no distance for a commercial indoor, or I'm sorry, a commercial outdoor range. There's no distance requirement in a special exceptions from a residential lot that I can tell. I just want to confirm that.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, so I'm looking at 1811153, which is, are the conditions for the outdoor ranges. And that is correct. I don't see any distance requirement there at all. There are distance requirements for indoor ranges from residentially zoned property, but not for outdoor.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Fiedler for bringing that to our attention. I also wanted to just, again, for the record, I, last week, I was the one holdout that didn't support any ranges in the Pearl Town Center. But based on the feedback of my colleagues, this amendment would at least outlaw the outdoor ranges that I feel like there was a little more agreement on. So that amendment is here, and my, hopefully, concession to the folks that wanted to have some opportunity.
Is that better?
I just want to make sure, I think this is self-explanatory by reading it, but better safe than sorry. To, if this amendment does not pass, the prohibition against indoor ranges remains in place in this bill?
Kelly County, guess that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Oh.
See it differently.
And this is just, you know, for a perspective that I'm considering and thinking about right now. I currently have an R1, I believe it's an R1 property in the 5th District, that abuts an outdoor firing range. And the folks that live there are not experiencing the best quality of life due to the noise. So that is coming into my thoughts right now, because I would, as I work with those folks to try to find a solution, I would hate to unintentionally put that issue right in your backyard. So.
I greatly appreciate that, as I'm sure most of District 6 does as well.
All right, seeing no more lights, call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
abstain.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
That is 1, 2, 3, 4 in the affirmative, 1 abstention, and 1 absent. Amendment?
Five.
Sorry, five.
Five, 1 absent, and 1 abstention.
I'm sorry, five, you were correct. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. In the affirmative, 1 abstention, 1 absent. Amendment Number 22 is adopted.
Please read Amendment Number 23.
Amendment Number 23, this amendment makes revisions to the grandfathering provisions of the bill.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So this simplifies and clarifies the grandfathering provision, so they work within the county's existing development review process. It allows development projects or certain grading or building permits in process at the time the bill becomes effective to continue to move forward under the old law. It eliminates an applicant's ability to elect to move forward under new parole code provisions if they are midway through the process. This basically kind of puts a little stronger line in between the pre-parole update and the post-parole. Is that a fair way of describing it? Okay. And with that, I move Amendment 23 and ask for your support.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administration appreciates the dialogue on this one. We support.
Any additional questions on Amendment 23? Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 23 has been adopted.
Please read Amendment Number 24.
Amendment Number 24, this amendment provides that a development in the Pearl Town Center may, under certain circumstances, request an offset for vehicle trips generated by any prior uses that exist or existed on the site within five years attributable to the uses and the daily trips generated by those prior uses.
Ms. Rodvian, you have been busy this week. Over to you.
As has Ms. Pompa, and the administration, and lots of us. So this basically allows a developer to use a traffic study or traffic data during the previous five-year period under certain conditions. If it's outside of that five-year period, then they have to go back and do new counts. I'm trying to think if there's a way, a better way to explain this. I've got lots of notes here, but I'm feeling like if I read the whole thing, it might not be helpful. So this is, I'll leave it at that, and ask for, did I already, yeah, we already did that. Ask for your support.
Motion to adopt, so is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Baron?
The administration worked hard with the sponsor and the stakeholders. A lot of the amendments we've been talking about are sort of minor tweaks. This is not a small amendment. It is important. Want to thank everybody that was, that worked hard to land this amendment in a good spot. We support.
Thank you.
And Ms. Pompa, if you want to add any of the details on it, feel free.
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So Ms. Rodvian is correct that, so if a developer is going to redevelop a site, and the use has been vacant for up to five years, the developer, if they do not exempt out of having to do a traffic study, they can look back at the use up to five years that previously existed, and they can get credit for those trips when they do their new traffic study. The other thing that this amendment does is it takes out our reference to critical lane volume, and it replaces it with level of service. Now, I had to talk to Sarah Fowler, who is a professional engineer in our transportation section, to make sure that I was going to represent this correctly. But basically, the critical lane volume methodology was invented in the 1970s as a planning tool, and it's quite old. And it can analyze a lot of traffic conditions in our modern world, like interconnected signals, complicated signal phasing, and situations where the queue of cars is too long to make it through a signal in one light signal. So setting the standard to level of service allows the use of best methodology to study each particular intersection. So this is really modernizing our language. And most counties I have worked in, in the last probably 10 years, they all use LOS, which is level of service. So again, it's a modernization. And it was an opportunity to do that since we're in this language in the code. The other reason why this language is longer is that aside from allowing the five-year lookback, it also sets out the process for using the five-year lookback. So we wanted to actually put the process into the amendment as well.
Mr. Volkey?
Are we using LOS anywhere else in the code?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, yes, I think that's the standard used everywhere else in the code.
So this is the only place?
This is the only archaic place? Yeah, in the parole provisions, I think was the only place that still had the carryover from the critical lane. I can't remember the term, critical lane volume.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Please.
This five-year lookback, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand this correctly. There's a vacant property. It's been vacant for up to five years, and you can use the traffic counts from five years ago, regardless of whatever else has gone on in the Pearl Town Center? Or is there some way that you're going to capture all of that differently?
It's an offset. So let's say the new project, and look, I don't do traffic engineering, so I might bring up a very bad example, and I'm going to apologize for that. bring up a very bad example, and I'm going to apologize for that. But let's, let's say it's going to, the new use that's proposed is going to be 1,000 new trips on the road, and that's probably a high number. But the old use that existed in the last five years, let's say that it had 450 trips. We're simply going to say that the new analysis is going to be based on 550. So it's going to be the delta or the difference.
So you won't have to go and look at the whole 1,000. You get credit for the 450 that existed before.
Up to five years.
Okay.
You know, and some uses, I mean, there are some out there in parole that, you know, let's say they're up at three years right now. Other jurisdictions may have longer lookbacks. This was, we were trying to find a balance for this one.
Ms. Wester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is important. This is a really, it doesn't sound interesting, but currently, if you were to go in to that vacant property and repopulate it, I always talk about my Wendy's, I won't tell you where it is, but the vacant Wendy's, if, if Dave came back and Daveco wanted to reestablish Wendy's, they're rebranding and all right now, they don't have to do anything. It is the use of that property, so they get, they don't have to, they can, they can move back in without a traffic study, if I'm correct, for the same use.
Christina Pampa with OPZ. If the use generates the exact same number of trips as the old use, correct?
Yep.
But they, that would already be exempt, you know, if, because we already have the little exemption of 250 new daily trips a day, daily, day, sorry. So the first thing, and the order of operation in this bill is the first thing any applicant is going to do is figure out if they're going to add more than 250 trips. If they don't, then they don't need to do the study. But if they do, then they're, and they have a use that existed within the last five years, then the next thing they'll do is look at the lookback to find the difference.
I'm paying close attention to this language for lots of reasons, so thank you.
Any additional comments?
I will just add that we had considered longer lookback periods as other jurisdictions had longer, and I wanted to rein it in a little bit. And I think we, you know, after discussing this with experts, five years was an agreeable, agreeable lookback period. I, I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Just curious what those other ranges were.
10, I think, is quite common.
10 and 13. I mean, in this case, the stakeholder wanted an indefinite lookback, and that seemed very unreasonable, so.
And I think five years acknowledges the pace at which parole town center is changing. I mean, if you, you know, have been around the parole town center area, which is actually a lot more than just the Annapolis Town Center where the target is, it's, you know, the things that are happening up and down Reva Road, things that are happening at the mall, includes the shopping center along Housley, a little bit of General's Highway. Actually, so it's a little bit bigger than what we might be thinking of, but all of that area, I think, is, is in transition and will continue to be in transition. And so this short, kind of gives, I think, a more reasonably short period rather than having that extended period where you might not see as much change as we're seeing right now, and we will see, will continue to see.
Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
7 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, amendment number 24 has been adopted.
Please read amendment number 25.
Amendment number 25, this amendment revises the requirement for reservation of land for future rights of way or other public infrastructure to be at a point when a county or state project is funded for design and is at least 60% designed.
Ms. Rodvian?
Hang on one second, I just want to review my notes quickly, but briefly, before I try and explain this. Okay, so Ms. Pampa, help me with this one. This one, we're currently at 30% in the current bill, and this would bump it up to 60%. Is that correct? So there could be a little bit later, it could happen a little bit later in the process, other way around.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. In the original bill, we had it tied to construction, but actually, by the time we get to funding a CIP project, the right-of-way has been acquired. So this backs it up to correspond with when we would be needing right-of-way. And so the trigger is now during design. The design has to be funded, and the design has to be at 60% completion, which is one of the standard benchmarks used for construction projects.
Thank you, and I'm going to apologize to my colleagues. I've been swimming in a lot of this, and I appreciate, I appreciate the clarification that I had it backwards. I just had this one backwards in my head. So this brings in that reservation at an earlier point.
Motion to adopt?
Yes, motion to adopt amendment 25, and I ask for your support.
Second.
Mr. Barron?
Yeah, and this is, brings us to the standard minor technical tweak, we support.
Any additional comments on amendment 25? Alright, call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
7 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, amendment number 25 has been adopted.
Please read amendment number 26.
Amendment number 26, this amendment adds a criteria for the evaluation of an incentive program application to be whether the proposed public benefits are comparable in scope and cost to the incentive requested.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So I think this concept is already in practice, that when an incentive program is out there, that OPZ will be trying to look for, you know, kind of a fair, a fair trade in terms of what the incentive granted is and what the, what do you call it, a concession, or what, what would be the public benefit gained. So this just puts it into the language of the bill, of the code, that we want to make sure that they're a reasonable, not exactly, but they're reasonably matched in, in scope and size and cost. Motion to adopt amendment 26.
For a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you. This is a clarifying amendment, we support.
Is this, is this in other provisions in the county code, this language?
Could you repeat that, please?
Is this language, as far as you propose public benefits are comparable in scope and its cost to the incentive request? Because that's a very subjective term, right? It's, it's, it's an eye of the beholder.
Right. And the, you know, the incentive program is very much a negotiated thing, where we're looking at the impact of what the developer is proposing, and then the public benefit of what they're proposing to offset that impact. But you do want, you do want those to be somewhat closely related. The old language in the old code said equitable relationship, and that is very hard, because when you're saying equitable relationship, does that mean the impact is $300,000, and they have to provide exactly $300,000 in benefit? So this, this language is a little bit more open, but it does identify that we want a relationship there. So I, I think it is good language to, to add in.
Mr. Volkey?
I think it gives an awful lot of power to OPZ, for you all to make decisions about what is appropriate or what is not. So that's what it seems like to me, is that it sort of opens it up even more and kind of just puts all that power in the bureaucracy. Am I understanding this amendment correctly? Like, there's no, there's no criteria that we have objectively that we're passing to look at. This is going to be something that you all decide internally. Is that right?
The incentive program has always worked that way, though. So I don't know that there's any more or less power going to the planning and zoning officer with this, by adding this.
Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
4 in the affirmative, 3 in the negative, amendment number 26 has been adopted.
Please read amendment number 27.
Amendment number 27, this amendment revises the applicability provisions to provide that activities exempt from the site development provisions of the code are not subject to the parole town center master plan or code provisions.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So this is really just to clarify what happens if you might have slightly different language in the code versus the parole town center master plan, if they are, if they are, if they're exempt from the site development plan. And motion 27, I move to adopt and ask for your support.
There's a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron?
We support. This comes out of discussions, the, and Ms. Pampa can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the language in the parole town center master plan says this is the plan, this is the language that governs it, this just provides clarity in the, in the case where the exemption exists for, from the site development plan that, that would govern, that exemption would be applicable. Is that correct, Ms. Pampa?
Generally, Mr. Barron. Christina Pampa with OPZ. So this is in the scope section of the parole town center code provisions, and basically, right now, we have, so this subtitle does not apply in the parole town center to the following, a building permit, and then it identifies three items. One is to demolish and reconstruct less than 1,000 square feet of an existing structure, add accumulative floor area of less than 1,000 square feet. There's reference to particular types of renovations or reconstructions of dwelling units. And after discussion on this, we felt that it was better to align this exemption with the exemption language in, for site development plan, because then if, you know, if that changes, this changes.
Okay, so I'm, is, any, any additional comments? Okay. I'm a little confused on this one, so, going to break this down, I guess Barney-style for me on this one. So you're saying that if there is a exemption in the current plan, you're trying to marry that up with the parole town center, you're saying it's exempt from the parole town center master plan code provisions?
We're saying that if a project exempts from the requirement to complete a site development plan, and that's in 174101, then it also would exempt from the parole requirements. It would go straight to grading permit or building permit.
Got it. Okay.
So it's aligning, it's aligning the requirements, so we don't have competing requirements.
Got it. Understood now. Ms. Ledbetter?
Clarifying question, I think you pretty much just covered it, but in other words, this amendment has those outside of parole town center playing by the same rules as those inside parole town center when it comes to site development provisions?
We, we don't want a situation where a project exempts out of the site development permit requirement but still has to comply with the parole provisions. So we're just making sure that they're in step with one another.
Okay.
Alright. Any additional comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
7 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, amendment number 27 has been adopted.
We have two more, folks. Please read amendment number 28.
Amendment number 28, this amendment clarifies that certain properties adjacent to and within 100 feet of property not in the parole town center, and in the RARLD, R1, R2, or R5 zoning districts, and is, is a residential use, are subject to a different maximum height.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So I think the best way to think about this is that in the overall parole town center, you sort of have transition from lower height and lower density to higher building height and higher density. This ensures that if you have a residential property, that you don't have a dramatic increase in height right next to it, that there has to be some transition in height. So if you're already in a residential property, you don't have to worry about a 16-story building going up next door. Is that a fair description?
This applies to the byright height limits for parole. And basically, if, if the project is next to residentially zoned property in the R5 or lower districts, and if the property is in residential use and it's outside the parole town center, that's when this requirement kicks in. And again, it's to protect those lower-density residential areas that may be adjacent to the, to the parole town center. And I can give you an example. We've already talked about Parker Drive, that's one area. There's the Monticello subdivision north of Best Gate. Those are both residential zone. But then, let's go to the Annapolis High School. That's also residential zone, but it's not in residential use. So it wouldn't apply to, to something like the high school. It's got to be in residential use.
Was there a motion to adopt?
Sorry, there wasn't. Motion to adopt.
For a second?
Second.
So you're going to have a parole town center personnel expert? There's going to be a lot of provisions here, so hopefully someone is attuned to all the different nuances of this overlay, because it's, it's a lot of things going on.
Sure. The staff in our regional team in the Development Division, they specialize in our town center code provisions, and then also our planners in the long-range planning section do review projects that come in, in the town centers. So there's really kind of a two-layer review. I do believe that after this, you know, if this gets adopted, we will have to brief the Development Division on a lot of the changes, because it, it is significantly different to make sure that the legislation is being implemented as it was envisioned.
This is like sending someone to school to be a dentist, and all of a sudden they're anesthesiologists, just.
Well, our development staff does this kind of work all the time. It's just a new set of regulations, and that, I mean, that happens. So they will, they'll get used to it.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
7 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, amendment number 28 has been adopted.
And the last one, please read amendment number 29.
Last but not least, amendment number 29. This amendment removes the prohibition on semi-detached dwellings in the parole town center and makes it a conditional use.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. Okay, so this one is a really kind of quirky amendment, so I'm going to explain it to you in the same way that I was able to understand it. So imagine you have a, a piece of land, and you want to build townhouses on it, and it's a kind of funny piece, cheap piece of land. Your townhouses are going to be attached, all attached, attached, you have a row of five, you have another row over here of five. Well, you have a little space over here where you can't fit more than two. Well, a two, two townhouses next to each other are no longer attached, they're semi-attached. And so this would allow semi-detached, it would allow you to have two townhouses together instead of, you know, a consecutive number of attached dwellings if, and here's the if, they comprise no more than 10% of the total number of units. So just, you know, we're letting them have a few semi-attached. I move to adopt amendment number 29 and ask for your support.
Second.
Ms. Volkey?
So this just allows less than 10% of duplexes. We can put some duplexes in.
Was it a duplex?
Right, and that's a duplex. Two of them, that's a duplex.
It's higher.
Christina Pampa with OPZ. So in Anarundel County, a duplex is one unit over top of the other.
Right.
Okay? A semi-detached is one unit next to each other sharing the wall.
Weird.
A few of those in my district, Severn Road or Disney Road. There was a motion to adopt, there was a second.
Administration supports, this is, as the councilman described, just additional flexibility to fit the, the units in. It makes sense as someone that lives in a semi-detached property. They're quite lovely.
Alright. Ms. Madavisha?
I just want to...
I just wanna urge everyone's support. We need the more flexibility in dwelling types and housing, whether it's an oddly-shaped parcel in the parole town center, this is definitely a tiny, teeny fractional step towards middle housing, so let's go.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Oh, wow. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 29 has been adopted.
And Mr. Smith, could I make a comment before we go on?
Please, please do.
I really, if it's not obvious, we had great Christina Pampa from OPZ, not only is an expert in her field, but she's also an excellent professor of all things planning and zoning. This is one of those times where the council really has to rely on our expertise, and I'm so grateful that we have excellent expertise in this area. So, once again, I'm just singing your praises, as well to Office of Law, who can make sense of all of these things. So, thank you for being great teachers and for making sure that we made this a good bill.
All right, so, bill number 6423 will be heard again on October 16th. So, look forward to seeing, I was gonna say Ravi in town, but it's not it. I'm gonna transition over to, to Ms. Hummer and allow her to do her brief presentation at this time, before we go to the next bill. So, please.
All right. So, I have a special recognition tonight, and this is a fun one. The Washington Post ranked all the pizza in Maryland, and Mama Roma's in Odenton is some of the best pizza in Maryland. And technically, they said they were number two, but we all know that they're number one in the state and in the area. And so, they are wonderful community partners, and they have wonderful pizza. And so, I wanted to officially recognize Mama Roma's for being named as one of the best New York-style pizzas in Maryland. Your flawless crust, magical red sauce, and melty cheese will always be welcome in Anarundel County. And I would ask, we have some of the Mama Roma's family here.
So, I'm Bruno, and he has been, my brother, he's been business since 2006. Been, you know, many, many years of, you know, hard work, and thanks all the customer, all the support of our employee, and all the people in the community. We've been through, you know, tough times, but, you know, we made it, and today we can say that, you know, we have a lot, a lot of support. The restaurant is very busy. It's not easy business. I don't think anybody making pizza for a living, but, you know. We do for a living, because that's our passion. Enough, we are grateful that we are recognized. It's, you know, it's a great success for us and for our team. Unfortunately, we cannot bring all the team tonight, but we're gonna make sure, we're gonna share the victory with our team, and we are happy to be here tonight. And thank you for, for inviting us. It's a pleasure.
Yes, well, we're very proud of you four, because I know that you're great, and I also wanna shout out, their pizza's great, but everything else is too. The pasta, everything. The pasta's amazing.
We import the tomato from Italy, by, you know, we make tomato from Italy, and we cook our sauce. All the pizza dough are fresh, from scratch. The bread is all made, we have a lot of seasoning and a lot of topping that's prepared in the house. All the pasta are made from scratch. The dessert, my brother is a pastry chef, he's the chef, I'm just one of the top, so. So, yeah, suggest everyone try, you know, come by Mama Roma and visit us.
Exactly.
Yeah, we've been also been, we've been bought in, best Italian restaurant in West County last year, and, you know, years ago, and three years ago, so, yeah.
The word is out.
The word is out, Mama Roma.
I'm out to Mama Roma.
And we are a family, me, my brother, and my mom, we've been in business for many, many years, almost 10 years. We're happy to be.
And Delegate Cruz, he was not able to make it tonight, but he goes there often, and so he's.
He's one of our several customers.
He is there all the time, so, well, we're very happy. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for having us, my brother.
Hey, brother.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to the end, we have seats in the back, and you might share a piece with the board. We might sell ourselves.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before you take a seat, before you take a seat, we're gonna open it up, we
got another council member who wants to ask you one brief question.
Yeah, thank, thank you for being here, and congratulations. I figure since you're in-house, and you seem to be experts at pizza, I'm hoping you could solve a ongoing question in the Fiedler household: is pineapple an appropriate pizza type?
Thank you.
Not common. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6623.
I'm very impressed that you are able to remember which bill we're on, because right now, I can only think about pizza. Bill number 6623, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Outdoor Lighting on Peers.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I made a motion to hold this bill at our last public hearing. Conversations continue on this bill, it's actually a little more complicated than I anticipated, so I am going to make another request to hold the bill until our October 16th meeting.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Madam, any questions? Madam Secretary, call the roll on holding the vote.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on bill number 6623 to October 16th, 2023, has been passed.
There was a marine thing, sorry about that for those who don't know. It's normally ooh rah, but, explain it. Please, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6723.
Bill number 6723, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Personnel, Public Ethics, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration. With me at the table, I have Ann Badowski and Jackie Atkinson from the Office of Personnel, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This is a personnel bill that creates a new exempt title, addresses classified service, vacant reclassification requests in detention, fire, planning and zoning, and transportation, and lastly, supports grade reallocations in the Police Department. It was discussed at our work session, I believe, back in early September. You should have letters of some, of support from Chief Wolford and the firefighters, as well as from the Animal Welfare Council, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? There will be, at the appropriate time, a motion to hold this, from what I understand, correct? But we will open this up to the public to provide testimony for those that, wishing to speak on this bill. So, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 6723. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the council, there was one submission made using that online testimony tool. It's included in the summary that's posted online. Everyone here on the dais received a copy, and it will be added to the record.
All right, I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on 6723? Seeing no movement, public hearing on bill 6723 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6723.
Bill number 6723, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Personnel, Public Ethics, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service.
Now, because this, this bill touches pension, we're gonna call a roll to, to hold this, so we allow the pension committee? Oversight committee to review this bill as well, so that's why we're not, that's why we're holding the vote on this, this bill. So, motion to hold the vote till October 16th? All right, sir, a second? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on bill number 6723 to October 16th, 2023, has been passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6823.
Bill number 6823, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Retiree Health Benefits Trust Agreements, Public Entities.
Mr. Hunt?
Give me one moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill number 6823 authorizes the county to enter into agreements with multiple specified entities and units of the state government to pool assets in the retiree health benefits trust for investment purposes. It also helps ensure that the county can pool assets with the Board of Education for retiree health benefits, as reflected in the FY24 approved budget. If this bill does pass, the retiree health benefits trust agreement will need to be amended to reflect the, the change in that amendment. Will come back before the county council for approval. And before I finish up, I do wanna recognize that the table with me, I still have Ann Badowski from Personnel, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Director.
Mr. Trumbauer, your fiscal note, you said, could you explain for the public kind of what the impact is for the county on this bill?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, there's no fiscal impact of this, this particular legislation. It's enabling, and what we've done is, we changed the language a little bit. You can see, I think we're only adding like eight or nine words. Just to clarify, that the Board of Ed can be added as a component unit to our retiree health benefits trust, known as OPEB trust. The fiscal impact will come into play during the budget process, and as you guys will remember, in FY24, we included funds in the budget as seed money, in essence, to start this in FY24. When and if this legislation is to pass, we will then do a valuation with our outside consulting firm to get a true number, which we will then include in the FY25 budget proposal that would be the annualized cost of this.
Thank you. All right, any questions from the council? Seeing none?
Yeah. Question, so, it says with one or more political subdivisions, so we could pool resources with other counties, too?
So, council member, that's a term of art. I'm gonna turn it over to Office of Law, because Mr. Swain and Ms. Blair Klassmeyer were very specific on the language that was in this. It extends beyond my budgetary expertise, shall we say.
I know you have expertise beyond the budget, but it's fine, we'll hear law.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I was not involved in drafting this, I'm not sure whether, whether there was an intent. I would read that to mean that that does mean one or more, because that's what it says, so that would mean that you could enter in with, with more than one political subdivision or unit of state government. Mr. Swain is here, if there's anything else. Is there any? Okay. Nothing else to add?
Council member, I might add, Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, that we wanted to make sure that this language accommodated the existing component units, because as we know, the library system and the community college are already in the OPEB trust, and we wanted to open it up to the Board of Ed. But I can tell you that there's, there's no other component units on the horizon that we're considering adding at this time. This was exclusive to the Board of Ed.
Okay.
And we didn't budget for anything else, either.
So, so, in theory, if this passes during the budget, we would still have another swipe, bite at the apple, if you were including any other components within the OPEB?
So, Mr. Chair, in the current budget year in FY24, there's already 19.3 million, give or take, I forget the exact number, that was budgeted for this. That is the Budget's Office' best estimate, having not done the actuarial determination, which we will do again when this passes. So, we will get a precise number. It's gonna be in that neighborhood, might be a little less, might be a little more. We will propose that in the FY25 budget, just like we put in money for county employees' component units. So, it'll just be part of the regularly recurring budget process. Now, I will say, looking forward into the future, we believe the long-term fiscal impact of this will be positive for the county, because as we are investing funds in the trust, that means that our, we are getting a premium for that, because that's earning more return, so then our annual contributions over time will be less, because the money in the trust is paying for part of our obligation every year, if that makes sense.
Seeing no additional comments? Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the benefit of those watching at home or in the audience tonight, consequences if we didn't pass this?
So, Madam Councilmember, if you don't pass this, essentially, we would not be able to enter in an agreement with the Board of Education, and so, that $19.3 million would fall to fund balance at the end of the year, because you would have legislatively prohibited us from doing what was included in the budget to do.
Thank you.
All right, seeing, seeing no additional lights at this time, we'll now open a public hearing on bill number 6823. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
I see one individual that had signed up in advance, Mr. Donald Parker. Here, Donald Parker. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on 6823 at this time? All right, seeing no movement, public hearing on bill 6823 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 6823.
Bill number 6823, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel Retiree Health Benefits Trust Agreements, Public Entities.
All right, any additional comments? Seeing none, please call, please call the roll on 6823.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 6823 has been passed.
Please read the title of bill number 6923.
Bill number 6923, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning General Provisions, Amendments to Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ethan Hunt, for the administration. With me at the table is Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and Christina Pampa from the Office of Planning and Zoning. This bill implements a 2018 charter amendment by establishing a process for posting specified outdoor notice signs prior to introduction of an amendment to a comprehensive zoning ordinance that was not requested by application or proposed by the Office of Planning and Zoning. I understand there are some amendments coming, we'll discuss those at the appropriate time, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from council? Seeing none. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to wait till after the public hearing, but we do have, I have two amendments that we've worked collaboratively with the Office of Planning and Zoning, our administrative executive officer, so, we can wait till after the public hearing, or we can have that conversation now? Let's just wait.
Let's wait, yeah, because we'll get a call, I know there was at least one signed up in advance. All right, seeing no additional lights, we're now gonna open the public hearing on bill 6923. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did. Mr. Chair, members of the council, there were six submissions through that online testimony tool that are included in the summary that is posted online. Everyone up here on the dais to get a copy through emails, and it will be added to the record.
All right, I see at least one individual that signed up in advance, Mr. Minahan. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak on bill 6923, please come at this time. Mr. Minahan?
Thanks very much, appreciate some of the amendments that I think are coming forward this evening. I'd just like to say that, as written, even amended at 10 days, this bill creates an undue burden on neighboring property owners to notice a sign, call OPZ for details, develop a personal response, or mobilize their HOA leaders to convene an emergency meeting, an emergency meeting, show up in person at the council meeting, not even via hybrid yet, on the appropriate Monday, and testify in two minutes. This is just not enough time for busy families with kids in schools and sports, working a full-time job or two, effectively no public transportation, aging parents, et cetera, et cetera. We believe that 20 days is the absolute minimum. And by the way, the 10 days is regular days, not business days. So that includes four weekend days in the 10-day window. We're saying this should be 20 business days, and appreciating the requirement or the coming amendment that you're going to post these to the county council website, that's a big boon. But the other amendment I'd encourage you to consider is a written notice to the property owners. If I'm building a deck, or if I'm building a dock or putting in a shed, I got to write a letter to my neighbors. If you're going to rezone the property next door, I would think the property owners should be receiving a letter. And so 20 days minimum, posted to the council website, and written letters of notification, or what I think we think GAN believes would be the appropriate. And by the way, there were no calls to the, no invitations to the audience for tonight's amendments. And so there was no opportunity to testify, even if someone were inclined to. And there's more conversation I'd like to have at a later point.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
But just to be clear, as, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to be clear, as bills are amended, even with the amendments tonight, that's the bill, you're going to have the opportunity here in two weeks to actually comment on that last bill that we had, the 15 whatever amendments for. Amendments aren't necessarily guaranteed to pass or fail, right? They are sort of tweaks. Say it again. Oh, you said he knows. He knows. So, you know, I certainly understand the sentiment and making sure. And I want people to know that this this specific bill that we're going to sort of undertake is about comp rezoning. It's a specific task. Comp rezoning is a process. You're going to be involved in the regional teams when it comes to comp rezoning. The output of those those teams, which are months into or years in the making, will go into the process of codifying comp rezoning. So comp rezoning is not going to be out of the blue, a bill that just drops on the desk, and then no one knows about it. We are literally doing it right now, and that bill may not be in front of us for another year, probably two. Okay, she's like, no, maybe not two years, but but we started the regional teams 2021. So the last two years, we've been working on the regional teams, and the output of those is going into. So this isn't a closed door. It happens like every 10 years-ish ballpark. And so we want to make sure that we we get the word out on that. So thank you all for definitely understanding the the public testimony, Mr. Minahan. And I know you're passionate about it.
Well, if I may, one more comment here. This is not about the process that the SACs have gone through. This is about an individual property owner who comes forward circumventing the SAC process, comes directly to the council.
No, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll bring back the administration. And the public hearing on, was it 69? 23 is now closed. All right. Madam Secretary, please read Bill number 6923.
Bill number 6923, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning General Provisions Amendments to Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
And I see we have a couple amendments here. Please read Amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment requires a minimum of 10 days' notice of a proposed change of zoning by amendment to a comprehensive zoning ordinance by signs on the subject property and notice on the council website, requires a property owner to submit proof of signposting, and clarifies that the requirements do not apply to a change of zoning that was requested by application to or proposed by the Office of Planning and Zoning prior to the introduction of the comprehensive zoning ordinance or an emergency ordinance.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill sort of snuck up on all of us, but we do have comprehensive rezoning coming in the form of, in nine different segments over the next few years. So we have Section 307 of the Charter that was voted on by the public, requiring a change of zoning by amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance that is not requested by application to or proposed by the Office of Planning and Zoning prior to introduction of the comprehensive zoning ordinance, may not be added by amendment to the bill until one or more signs are posted on the subject property in the manner provided by the county code. So the charter amendment passed, and now we are here to create the code language. And then, subsequent to code language, the council will create a process by which property owners who did not go through the application process, or their property wasn't proposed by the OPZ, to come forward and apply through their council member or a council member for a rezoning. We've noted this happens about every 10 years. We're a little beyond that now. So the amendment before us tonight is changing the bill as drafted, as introduced to a 10-day advance for signs by the property owner, and simplifying some of the language, and also allowing, you know, requiring the technology. I realize we've had testimony for longer days, but with a 95-day life of the bill, I think the 10 days is appropriate for all parties, this council, and our obligation and our ability to amend legislation, the public, and the property owner, as well as OPZ, they have to provide the signs and review the, we'll probably want to review the application as well. But each amendment would come before this council and be publicly debated and possibly passed, possibly not. So I ask for my colleagues' support. This was, this amendment was drafted in collaboration with with all parties, and I just ask, motion to adopt this amendment.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the sponsor of this amendment for working with the administration, the Office of Planning and Zoning, to arrive at this language that we think will work. So we would urge the council to support it.
Any additional comments? Good. Madam Vice Chair? Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
Please read Amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment reconciles code to use the term comprehensive zoning ordinance.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is exactly what was just read. It is just making sure we're using proper terminology that's consistent in the code and with the charter. Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
I would just echo my previous comments and urge the council to support this amendment as well. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two has been adopted.
All right. Bill number 6923 will be heard on October 16th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7023.
Bill number 7023, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Lease Between Anoronal County and Addiction Recovery, Inc., Doing Business as Hope House Treatment Center.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christopher Daniels from Central Services and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So Anoronal County acquired the Crownsville Hospital Complex from the state in December 13th of 2022. As part of that acquisition, the county inherited several existing tenant leases. Addiction Recovery Incorporated doing business as Hope House Treatment Center, which is located at 26 Marbury Drive in Crownsville, is one of those. The tenant is a nonprofit dual diagnosis treatment center with locations in Crownsville and Laurel, and they work with individuals who are experiencing substance use disorders, mental health challenges, and provide the means for those individuals to become healthy and productive citizens, equipped with the tools for a life of sobriety and recovery. Both the county and Addiction Recovery Incorporated desire to enter into a long-term lease for the property. A lease would be for a term of 35 years plus two 30-year renewal options. Rent is $1 per year. The tenant would be responsible for maintenance and repairs to the leased building and leased property. The tenant's prior lease with the state, which was not fully executed at the time we transferred the property, was for a term of 20 years for $1 per year. We're happy to answer any questions.
Since you're here and you spent time, can you give us a little bit about Hope House for the public's general knowledge?
A little bit of information about Hope House? They treat people in the areas who have addiction problems. It's in, they're people who actually stay at the facility. I think they'd really do good work, work for people.
And how long has Hope House been at that location? I mean, I know, but I've joined this mainly for the general public knowledge.
I don't know how long they've been at the current location.
Do you know?
I do not know. We can find out if you'd like.
It's been a while. I mean, I've been there and seen the facility. Okay. Any additional questions? And at some point, I would love to give, and I don't know, obviously, this is your district, right, Crownsville? Just to see what the county executive's vision is for that whole area. I mean, I know we've heard comments and things like that, but it's a large piece of land, and I would love to know what's, what is the big picture plan for Crownsville.
Absolutely.
It's in progress, I'll tell you that. It's a community collaborative effort to bring community ideas to the table.
All right. Seeing no additional comments. We will now open a public hearing on Bill 7023. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
All right. And I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Anyone wishing to speak on 7023 in the audience? All right. Seeing no movement. Public hearing on Bill number 7023 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7023.
Bill number 7023, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Lease Between Anoronal County and Addiction Recovery, Inc., Doing Business as Hope House Treatment Center.
All right. Any additional comments? Discussion?
I just want to ask for my colleagues' support. They're a great operation, doing wonderful business and wonderful service to the community. So I hope you all will support.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 7023.
Ms. Hummer? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 7023 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 7123.
Bill number 7123, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Fire Services Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Preedy Emrick, the Director of our Office of Emergency Management, as well as Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This is really just a cleanup bill that repeals County Code Section 121105, which states that the fire department is responsible for emergency management. The Office of Emergency Management was moved from under the fire department in the FY2017 approved budget. I would ask for you to pass this bill, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, I appreciate the comments you had during the work session on this bill as well. Did you have any comments in reference to it?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Happy to answer any questions to clarify. I know that was brought up in the work session, but again, as the administration said, the office has been operating independently for many years now. So just cleaning up the code.
Okay. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none. We'll now open a public hearing on Bill 7123. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
And I do not see anyone that signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on 7123? Seeing no movement. Public hearing on 7123 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 7123.
Bill number 7123, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Fire Services Emergency Management.
All right. Seeing no additional lights. Please call the roll on 7123.
Ms. Hummer? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 7123 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read title of Bill number 7323.
Bill number 7323, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Site Development Exemptions Improvements to Existing Structures Cumulative Floor Area and Impervious Surface.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate some some time on this today. We'll we'll get through this. Ultimately, this bill is looking to simplify the code and relieve property owners of the burdensome, lengthy, and expensive site development process when adding small additions of impervious surface within within the 5,000 square feet limit of disturbance. To note, the limit of disturbance describes the amount of area you're using in order to construct your project. So your limit of disturbance is always larger than your actual finished product, project. So I landed on increasing the square footage that would be exempt from a full site development plan, increasing it from 1,000 to 4,000. Really, I know the administration, we had talked about, they were a little more comfortable with 3,000, but really, I think if you're all the way to 4,000, you're probably going to be working be outside of that 5,000 square foot limit of disturbance anyway. So I think it's going to kick you into a site development plan based on what we see as projects. So really, I just was trying to get to a number that wasn't sort of arbitrary. So if the 3,200 square feet of additional structure or or surface, I was just trying to make it work within that limit of disturbance. The existing code already says that if you're less than 5,000 square feet of disturbance, you are exempt from stormwater management unless you're a single-family detached home or are in the critical area, and you can do a standard grading plan instead of a full grading permit. So this is just looking to simplify time and process for property owners and small business owners. We do have an amendment that we can talk about after the public hearing. We're happy to have the administration weigh in.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank the sponsor for working with us on this bill as well. We've been, had some back and forth on it over the last several months. We are, we're good with the bill as drafted. I know there's an amendment to strip out some language, so we'll discuss that at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I do want to make a comment in reference to, I know the audience, over the last probably couple of months, have seen a lot of land sort of activities or construction. And that's intentional. I think many of you know that we are in a significantly dire sort of straits when it comes to housing, right? It's a big problem that we're going to be facing here in the very near future. And so anything we can do to enhance that to help reduce the cost so that folks can, you know, find an affordable place, these are, these little tools that I think many of the council members are looking into to try to help relieve some of that pressure. So I've noticed that over the last couple of months, and I'm sort of saying that because that's exactly what we're dealing with. And you'll see that in upcoming legislation that the administration is also pushing down. So every little thing helps from my perspective. But is there any discussion from other council members? Seeing none. We'll now open a public hearing on Bill number 7323. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
All right. And I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on 7323? All right. Seeing no movement. Public hearing on Bill 7323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7323.
Bill number 7323, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Site Development Exemptions Improvements to Existing Structures Cumulative Floor Area and Impervious Surface.
I think Mr. Volkey's going to come up with the names in the future. That's a, he always finds these short succinct titles. But please, please read Amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment removes the requirement that the impervious surface be reviewed and managed in a certain manner.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Due to an erroneous code reference in the bill, this amendment takes the bill back to some basic language of just increasing the square footage from 1,000 feet to 4,000 square feet, with the idea that I will be coming back next meeting with some stormwater mitigation. I, to be honest, ran out of time to really fully understand the back and forth we were having with the administration. And I would rather propose mitigation that is proportional and appropriate for the small increases in the bill. So with that, I just want to correct the erroneous code reference and then move forward next October 16th with with mitigation.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I neglected to introduce everyone who's at the table with me. So I do have Eric Michelson, our Director of Environmental Policy, Raghu Badami from IMP, Lynn Miller from OPZ, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. And I did speak with the sponsor of the amendment earlier today, and we had a conversation regarding this exact matter. And we do want to make sure that stormwater is properly, stormwater management is properly addressed. So we're going to be working with the sponsor and the folks at this table over the next week or two to come up with language that properly addresses it.
Let's continue. Any additional comments on Amendment number one? All right. Please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
All right. Bill number 7323 will be heard again on September, I'm sorry, October 16th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7423.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7423.
Bill number 7423, an ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, codes and supplements, fire prevention code, zoning, group homes, community-based assisted living facilities, and recovery residences.
Mr. Volkey.
The bill does what it says.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of folks here, and I don't think we'll all be able to fit at the table, but as we all know from this issue, this touches a lot of county government, state policy, and federal policy. So I'm going to introduce the folks here. We have our health officer, Tony Geddon. We have Andrew McCarron from IMP, our county attorney in yours, Greg Swain, Lynn Miller from OPZ, Adrian Meikler, our Director of Mental Health, the chief, our fire chief is also in the audience, and I'm sure there is somebody I forgot to introduce. Just want to say that this is a very important issue. We've now spent, I want to say, four, five meetings discussing issues around recovery residences. The administration is coming to the table to oppose this bill. We have had, like I said, lots of discussion, happy to go into detail on our concerns with this bill, but at its core, the issue that we have is the county government cannot regulate healthcare delivery through our zoning code. So I'll leave it at that, and happy to answer any questions.
Any additional comments from council members? All right.
Chair Smith? Oh, I guess this could wait, actually, but I was curious to hear a little bit more about the concerns that the administration had. They could wait till after the public hearing, if that's preferred. That'll give you time to think. Okay, let's go forward with the public hearing. I'll withdraw my question.
We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 7423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. We received nine submissions. Those submissions are all included in the summary that's posted online. Every council member here received an email, and it will, those will be added to the record.
All right, and I see we have three individuals that signed up in advance. We'll have them come forward, speak for two minutes, state your name and address for the record. The first one up is Teresa Hessler, and we have Chris Kaufman, Nicholas Acosta. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on 7423? Please come up at this time. Ms. Hessler.
... Vice Chair, members of the council. For the record, my name is Teresa Hessler, and I'm here on behalf of the Recovery Housing and Treatment Centers Coalition of Maryland to respectfully ask that you oppose Bill 7423. We are a statewide coalition of providers, including those in Anarundel County, who own and operate facilities across the continuum of care for persons experiencing substance misuse disorder. The coalition has gone into great detail for many legislative council meetings outlining our concerns with similar provisions contained in this bill. Our coalition wants to ensure that any legislative actions taken truly benefit and uplift the community and do so without inadvertently causing harm or creating undue burdens on those providing and receiving services. We remain committed to ensuring that Councilmember Pickard's bill that passed last meeting is implemented effectively, and while we appreciate having discussions around 7423 with a few of the stakeholders, we do not believe this small-group conversation was intended to look at a holistic approach at recovery homes and treatment centers, which was the intent of a future work group. Instead, it was a conversation around 7423. For those reasons, we respectfully request the council give an unfavorable vote to 7423 and pursue a work group or support future legislation or resolutions that encourage the state to look further into matters relating to recovery homes. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Chris Kaufman, Glenburn, Maryland. Thank you all for allowing me to address the committee regarding Bill 7423. I am a commercial construction project manager, as well as a recovering addict, and the owner of two MCOR-certified recovery houses. During discussions of Bill 5523, Mr. Volkey made it abundantly clear that your motives are to better help individuals, and for that, I thank you. There is always room for growth when it comes to helping people seeking recovery. Despite wanting to help, please try to understand that this bill is not the way to do so. I also want to better, I also want to better help individuals more than I already do. You know, this bill, however, will restrict my ability to do so as Bill 7423 bottlenecks me into providing housing versus my goal to provide higher levels of care. If this bill passes, and if I were to obtain my goal and open up a, let's just say, 2.5 or higher, then I'm forced to reclassify my pre-existing recovery houses into group homes. I leased one of my recovery residences. If I reached my goal during this lease, I'd be forced to discharge those clients in the recovery house and be held liable for that lease still because I cannot provide the sprinkler systems required for the group home classification. How does that make sense? So I ask why. If I was to obtain my goals, why couldn't my recovery houses stay strictly as recovery houses? Why would they need to be converted to group homes if they would continue to run solely as recovery houses? Why is there a need for occupancy reclassification when the occupancy classification remains the same? At the end of the day, I guess I'm just confused, a certified recovery house is still a certified recovery house regardless of ownership. This bill is unnecessary and would ultimately hurt the same individuals you say you want to help. Please oppose Bill 7423. Thank you for your time.
Sir.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the council. My name is Nicholas Acosta. I am co-owner of Elevate Recovery Centers, an outpatient substance use treatment provider and living changes, a certified recovery residence organization. Both organizations are owned and operated in Anarundel County. I am a resident of Anarundel County and a person in long-term recovery. I am here this evening in opposition of Bill 7423 for the following reason. Reasons. One, a change of occupancy should not be required for recovery residences. Bill 6123 does a great job of outlining requirements for uncertified recovery residences to meet county code and does not include a chain of occupancy. A change of occupancy for existing recovery residences will create a disruption in safe housing for those in early recovery. Two, the affiliate definition is vague and leaves a lot of open, leaves a lot open for individual interpretation. Three, whether or not the owner of a recovery residence also operates a 2.5 or higher level of care has no bearing on the life and safety of the residents in the home and shouldn't be used to define the home as a group home. Four, this bill broadens the definition of a group home and narrows the definition of recovery residence, which will do more harm to the community than good and will create a disruption in the amount of safe housing available for those early in recovery. We respectfully request the council not pass Bill 7423. We understand the need for clear legislation on recovery residences and want to work collaboratively with the county as well with the state and key stakeholders to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Is it on?
All right, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the council. I was just sitting back there, and I actually had to ask, 7423, does that mean it's the 74th bill this year? And I was told yes, so it shows you how little I know about what you do and how, like, this is the third bill that I've actually had to look at, dig into, and actually see how it might affect us, and you guys are dealing with 74 for that, and you guys have really given it time. I know how much time you've given to this, so for that, I mean it when I say thank you. I mean it for everybody that's come out and toured. I mean it for everybody that's set up provider meetings and met with us and talked with us. I truly do mean thank you. But I am opposed to this bill as it stands. The reason being is we were, we've been discussing whether or not we could come, come up with some ways to amend the bill or talk about the bill, but I knew that the meat and potatoes would never be, and that's in the definition for me. It's separate from the state definition, which I know to be true, will cause massive issues for certification with separate definitions, even in this bill itself. It says, unless defined in this article, the Natural Resources Article of the State Code or COMAR, words defined elsewhere in this code. It is already defined in COMAR. I don't know how the county would actually see if you were conditioning use upon application for certification. That would mean the county would have to see everybody that's in your house, know what level of care they might be, and outpatient, actually see this, all while it's already being policed by other organizations at the state level. As we speak, programs in our county do have corrective actions. They're doing their job. I have a, right in front of me, I have a provider alert that shows compliance, quarterly compliance report that has 12 other issues on there. For the county to look at just one of the 1,000 potential issues and put that into zoning law, it just seems like it would cause further issues because it's not outlining, outlining the other 999 violations that we could potentially be in at any time. And I just think that BHA is doing their job, and they're doing a darn good job. They really are. They're looking into every single complaint, whether it's an oven isn't working, that just happened to me a few weeks ago, or whatever the case may be, they are looking into all of the issues that are being brought forth, and I just, please ask the council to allow that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. Please, please be seated. All right, the, that was, the public hearing on Bill number 7423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7423.
Bill number 7423, an ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, codes and supplements, fire prevention code, zoning, group homes, community-based assisted living facilities, and recovery residences.
Please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment substantially rewrites the bill to reflect changes made to law by Bill number 6123.
Mr. Volkey.
Again, the amendment does what it says, just to be clear. When this bill was dropped, 6123 had failed at the previous meeting, so when this bill was drafted, it included the provisions of 6123, but when 6123 rose from the dead like Lazarus, and that bill came back, then at that point, it made these definitions in here a bit superfluous, and it required an amendment to basically conform the bill to what the code will be once 61 becomes part of the code which it's passed. So it will do that. So with that, that's the whole purpose of this amendment. I would ask my colleagues to pass it because it's, while it looks like it is a very detailed amendment, it actually just cleans the bill up to make it what it was supposed to be, which is either keeping 61 or just sort of doing some things on top of 61. So my reason for asking you all to support it is pretty simple. We had a work group a couple of weeks ago. Councilwoman Radvian was able to attend, thank you. Chair Smith was able to be there. Can't have anybody else, because if we did, we would violate the Open Meetings Act, which would be a problem. We were able to meet with both the proponents and opponents of this, including many of the folks who came up and testified today. We were discussing this. The thought process was that we would pass this amendment, which I shared with everybody in the meeting. We would go ahead and get this bill amended so that it was in the right place, that everybody could see exactly what we were looking at, and the providers who had concerns about the bill would spend the next two, three weeks, and they would come back with any concerns that they had specifically to amend this legislation to make it more palatable. Instead of that actually happening, what has happened instead is that it looks like we're just going to try to kill the amendment, we're going to then try to kill the bill, and we're going to say, ta-da, we're done. So it's unfortunate, it doesn't feel like what we all discussed that we would do in that meeting, so it's frustrating from that standpoint, but at the end of the day, we will take the vote and we will see what happens. I would just ask my colleagues to pass this amendment, which, though it is substantive, is really more technical in nature than substance. To allow this bill to continue to sit out there for another two weeks, let's continue to have discussions about how to make this bill palatable to the folks who have concerns about it. We can come back with additional amendments in two weeks, and at that point, if people still are not comfortable with the bill, we can always vote it down. So I'm asking you to pass this conforming amendment and to allow this bill to continue. With that, I think that comports with what we discussed in our task force work session, work group, whatever you want to call it, that was a bit informal. I don't know that the council has any mechanism for a task force or a work group, so what we put together in that provider meeting is about as close as you're going to get to a task force or a work group, hence the reason we put it together. And I certainly think that more voices can be heard and brought into the conversation. I think that's important. I think, I'm excited about some of the resolutions we're going to do tonight and passing some of those to call on the state to take certain actions, but the two things are not mutually exclusive. We don't have to completely abdicate our ability to regulate zoning. What this bill really does at its heart, I just want to get at this, it's a sprinkler bill, right? That's really what it is. The concern that everybody has is they don't want to have to add sprinklers. The cost of sprinklers is what they're worried about. I'm going to be honest with you, the cost to a business of adding sprinklers when you have that many people living in a house is, is something that I think is probably a reasonable cost of doing business, to protect those lives. It's something that I thought the county had been enforcing by way of sort of policy behind the scenes that nobody can even actually see. There is a policy memo that's existed for years that talks about the sprinkler requirements for group homes, but it's not codified. So this helps to bring some of that into light and put it into code, but again, it seems like people's pecuniary interests may ultimately triumph. So with that, I think that making homes safer, especially when you have a large number of residents residing there, is an admirable goal. I think that does serve to keep people safer who are in, in recovery and are some of our most vulnerable in our population, but, you know, I'll leave that to my colleagues to decide how you want to vote on this. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really know where to begin after that monologue. I think, I'll go back to Councilwoman Radvian's question to, to the administration before the public hearing started, and I think you heard from members of the public that testified about the concerns inherent in this bill. I don't believe, and the folks at the table with me are the experts who are dealing with these issues every day, who have deep concern about the safety and quality of care of those residents. I don't believe that this amendment fixes this bill. I don't believe that there is a path forward to address some of the concerns being raised without state or federal action. So we have certain powers here at the county. A zoning bill, we can only do so much, and the, the resolutions that are coming, the grant program the county is putting together, the actions that the state can deal with are the right place to deal with these issues that are being raised. Our zoning code, the county government is not the right body to take on some of these issues. So with that, you know, two weeks, four weeks, don't see how we're going to get this bill in a place where the administration is going to support it.
I do want to say some, to speak to the sponsor in general. One, actually, the council does have the ability to instantiate sort of work groups to look into issues. That's actually, we have that in our charter, I guess, to do that. But for me, when it comes to the, one of the things I had asked for back in July, and I'll bring this up publicly, was the ability to put together a work group that was going to be separate from individuals and organizations who were, who didn't have a vested interest in the outcome in the bill. And so what's happened, so we, we met in late July to, to vote on this, this previous bill, and we had an August recess, and then September, this bill was introduced, and I love the sponsor, trust me. He's done a lot of work on, on this effort, and, and for me, it's always been about, how do we fix this at the county level with the help of the state? And never really had that opportunity to bring together a group of policyholders like doctors and physicians and things like that, not the operators, because really, the folks who have really pushed this, or created, I would say helped create the legis, the language in the bill, were the operators themselves. And I feel like, it's like, you know, like a, like a criminal writing a bill that frees them from, from prison to some extent, not saying that they're, they're criminals, the operators, that's probably the wrong language. But in a nutshell, what I'm asking for is people who actually don't have any affiliation with the groups who are lobbying this bill to be a part of the panel and the work group to say what is the right direction going forward. That, that's what I've wanted. We weren't necessarily able to have that happen here this month, so that's why I've always had pause with asking, you know, the, the operators to, who's been on this committee, or at least the meeting that we've held here recently, and involved with that. The second, or third thing is, I certainly, and I know Ms. Hummer as well, is going to be working with some state legislators here in the very near future, who actually serve on the, what's it, Health and Human Services Committee?
Health Government Operations.
In Government Operations, literally, the chair of that, we're going to have a conversation to say, here's a problem that some operators have said are impacting this, this community. We need you to sort of form together a team of folks at the state level, because really, that's really where this could be, should be, I guess, to address that with us sort of taking lead from them. That's going to happen. of taking lead from them. That's going to happen here, literally this month, so that when they go back in session and their committees, they can start bringing people forward from across the spectrum to actually weigh in on this issue. And so that's where my heart or my feelings have been. It's not that I think the bill is good or bad, it's not where I'm at. It's, I really want it to be separated from the operators who have led with creating the language on this particular piece of legislation. But I see the sponsor's light is up, and I'm going to go back to him very briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. I think the only thing I would say is, I don't know how to call a work group. Maybe that's something that the chair has to do, I don't know. I would ask you to do it. You know, I don't know how to do it. I've never seen it done in the five years I've been on the council. I've never seen a work group called by way of the council, and we've subpoenaed these experts and brought them in to talk about it or do it. I've never seen that happen. So to the extent that it can happen, let's do it. Absolutely. I think the concern that I have is, we did the closest thing that I've ever seen to a work group, which is you put as many people as you can together in a room, and you try to hammer out ideas and see what you've got. I think the biggest thing that I would say is, one of the reasons that it's the providers who are the owners, if you will, and not necessarily the clinicians, though there were clinicians in that meeting. I would note Godenziya had a clinician in there who's one of the most qualified, certified people to speak in this topic, right? But one of the reasons that you have the folks who are actually the owners of these entities is because this is at heart a zoning issue. It is not necessarily a clinical issue. And so because it is zoning, because it deals with sprinklers, because it deals with the costs of doing business for a business owner, that's one of the reasons why those people are there. I'm not discounting that doctors, clinicians, et cetera, should potentially weigh in to the extent that they've got something to add. But overall, it is really a zoning bill. That's what we keep coming back to. So there's been a lot of talk from the administration and others, well, you know, we're regulating delivery of care, and we're talking about services that can be provided. No, we're not. We're literally talking about zoning and regulating these structures, the dwellings in which folks are living, and we're saying what those requirements are. That's what we're talking about. So that's why we keep having the conversation with the people who own the dwellings, if you will, who own those residences. So that's the sort of impetus for the conversation being focused with those folks. We can certainly bring in more. I mean, for my last bill, we had Mr. Hudak, who's a policy expert from University of Maryland, who came down here and testified. He was a professor. He was in support of bill 5523. His testimony did not seem to sway anybody in terms of supporting that bill. I think there are others in the community who are clinicians, who have weighed in and said they support it specifically, again, Godenziya. And I would just mention that they were in support of it, and there were clinicians there who supported it. So I don't know what more we can do, but if you've got ideas or if you're able to convene that work group, I say please do.
Okay.
I saw yours open first.
Yeah, sure. There were a lot of lights, well, I thought there were a lot of lights lit up. So I want to go back to what is at the heart of this amendment, and it is conforming. I mean, it's basically bringing us to where we are considering previous legislative action. So it's not bringing back another bill. It's not getting into the weeds that we have gotten into before. It just, for me, I think that when you look at the substance abuse community, when you look at the recovery community, when you look at the mental health community, one of the things that we hear all the time is that everybody's pointing fingers at everyone else on who should take responsibility for what. So we already know that this has been a brewing issue for well before my time on the council. I remember the previous council having small discussions on it. So to sit here now and even contemplate saying, no, 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 we're not going to do anything, we're going to wait for the state to do something. Let's say the state does have legislation in the next General Assembly that they discuss, and it doesn't make it out of committee, or it makes it for a vote and it's voted down. Where do these people then fall? Who is looking out for them then? So I think that it would be, I would encourage my colleagues not to cut this bill off at the knees. Support this amendment this evening. Let's continue the conversation. It's an important conversation, and everyone impacted by this deserves us to take a hard look at it, and if it means adding a sunset provision. Or, I mean, we can get creative. We've done it before, and it's just, I would hate to see us kill this bill tonight. That's where I am.
Mr. Chair, sorry if you want to move on, but can I say something?
Please.
So there's been a lot of discussion about a meeting that, I believe I was invited to about 24 hours in advance and could not make it. But I think one of the things that is going to be challenging on this particular bill to get right is there has not been at the table the perspective of the regulators. And it's the regulators who are going to have to enforce whatever this council passes. And there is language in this bill that scoops up group homes and the developmental disability community, and there are other pieces of this that touch this, that go beyond the addiction and the recovery communities. So I want us to be very careful about, and very deliberate about how we make these changes, and make sure that it's not just the stakeholders, the providers, but the regulators who are involved in those discussions. And it's not going to be solved in two weeks. I mean, if it was, we would, we would have had a solution three years ago when we started, or four years ago, or five years ago when we started talking about this. And then, just to the comment that nothing has been done, there was a bill that was passed. So we have made some improvements to our code, and we do have folks here at the table who do this work every day. So I don't, I don't want to be fatalistic that we can't solve this, but these challenges are real, and it's not going to be solved under the pressure of a legislative time clock. So I just want to put that out there.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I have a question. I'm not sure if this is for Department of Health or the Office of Aging. Could you clarify exactly what a community-based assisted living facility is? I know we have actual, you know, standalone facilities, and then we have smaller bed ones. And so if you would just clarify the different.
Ms. Kelly is coming up.
Hello, good afternoon, or good evening. Carissa Kelly, Director of the Department of Aging and Disabilities. So the small community-based assisted living was a definition created to define the four to 16-bed, community-based assisted livings, the ones that you'll see in the neighborhoods. It really is a lower-cost alternative to a large institution, and quite frankly, it's where individuals would like to stay in their community.
And how many of those do we have in the county?
We have 113.
113. Could I?
Please.
So in one section, in section 153102, section three, it says, "A group home or community-based assisted living facility with six or more occupants that is established in a single-family detached dwelling shall constitute a change of occupancy classification and shall comply with provisions of this code applicable to the change in occupancy." So, and Office of Law, you may be able to help me with this. So based on what that says, the community-based facilities are going, with six or more, are going to fall under, now become a group home, which is going to require them to do more sprinklers, more ADA-type provisions. Is that correct?
Yeah, Greg Swain, County Attorney, that is correct. And that's going to, and I think it is important to look at this bill, that it really doesn't just adjust zoning. It also addresses the building code, which is a little different. And the way we enforce the building code is a little different from the way we enforce the zoning code. So typically, with this kind of a language, this kind of language, that is going to apply to any new facilities that open, or any facilities that come in for permitting for any other matters, not to existing facilities.
Not to existing, but is that specified, that it's not to existing facilities, or would that need to be added, that we grandfather in the existing facility?
Well, we do usually do grandfathering with subdivision and zoning and not the building code, because the building code, again, we don't do, it's not really complaint-driven the way the zoning code is.
Right.
So.
So, but this could impact, okay, and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, one more question that still goes along with this. It also states that this would be with six or more occupants, it would create a change of occupancy reclassification. However, in the definition for group home one, group home one is eight or more people. So there's a conflict there between the numbers that it would trigger that reclassification. Is that?
That's correct. And the community-based assisted living facilities are also broken into two groups, one and two, and it's the same number. So eight is the cutoff for a community-based assisted living facility one.
Okay.
So it's the same, kind of, not really a discrepancy, but not a consistency.
Not a, right, that's what I mean, a consistency. So to make it more consistent, perhaps that provision should read, with eight or more, or nine or more residents, rather than the six or more.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have a further, but I'll let somebody else go.
Madam Vice Chair, if she had comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been consistent on this issue since we started discussing it in the summer with other legislation. I really feel like there are issues that are still trying to be addressed through the zoning code, and I just, flat out, I just disagree. But mainly, my main problem with this bill is the definition of recovery residents, and I feel strongly that it should stay in line with the way the state defines it. We're just going to have to agree to disagree on that. But the sponsor, Councilman Volkey likes to describe this as, this is just about sprinklers. But at the end of the day, this bill is really about, really only uncertified recovery houses would be forced to put in sprinklers with more than six residents. So interestingly enough, through all these conversations and emails that the council has received, and questions to the Office of Law, and questions to the Department of Aging, and questions to the IDD community, there are so many inconsistencies with state law regarding definitions of group home and community-based assisted living that kick in to, there's other, down in the weeds of the bill, there's lots of things that, to me, are just messy and inconsistent. But interestingly enough, it was shared with us, this provider alert from Optum, about how they're already starting to pick up on some of the issues that my colleague was trying, is still trying to address, and they're picking it up on their own. And the folks that regulate recovery residences and treatment facilities are doing what we were hoping they would do, providing the oversight and making sure their folks that they accreditate, license, or certify are doing what they're required to do. So I'm quite optimistic that maybe this conversation right here in the Anarondale County Council chambers is lighting a fire up in those different agencies. So I'm feeling like we don't need to do this. We can leave it to the folks that have the regulatory powers, and we can get back to the zoning code reforms that need in other areas. But that's, that's how I feel about it. I'm going to know on the amendment, I'm going to know on the bill.
Thank you. So I obviously have been really struggling with all of this, as you probably have noticed if you've watched, watched the, you know, several recent episodes of trying to figure out how to address recovery residences. And I have to say, I do appreciate the amount of work that has gone in here. I am a little frustrated with the process in the way it happened. I know the idea was we wanted to get things moving and have something, you know, to introduce, but, you know, basically, the work group turned into, here's a draft. And we had a meeting to discuss the draft. And one of my questions at the meeting was, can we walk through this step by step so we, so we can clearly understand everything that's going on here? And that started to happen, and then it didn't finish. So I went to try and do my due diligence and, you know, spent a good amount of time on the phone with our, with our counsel attorney, trying to break down and figure out what's going on here. And even with all of that, I'm still not really sure what is, what is the motivation here, and what is the purpose. And I don't feel comfortable saying that it's really just about fire safety, because, you know, all along, in our previous discussions, it was about, we need to address PHP with a pillow. And we now see from that memo that my colleague mentioned that that is being addressed. You know, we have now, we now know that there are being some audits where that's, you know, being investigated. And I don't, they don't mention specific providers in that memo. I don't, I'm guessing that they probably cannot. I don't know exactly how that works. But, so I just feel like we're, I feel like we've done what we need to do. The state is better positioned to do this work. I would love to hear some more from the folks at the table. I realize, you know, to hear your thoughts about, you know, what, what works here, what's not working here. But I think one of the things that Ms. Pickard was trying to, you know, get me to believe, or trying to convince me of several months ago, is that we do see that there are problems. There are, you know, some practices that, you know, folks have disagreements about, is this an okay practice? This is not an okay practice. And Ms. Pickard continually said, but we're trying to regulate it through the zoning code. We're trying to regulate it through the zoning code. And I think I've finally come to the full agreement that trying to regulate these things through the zoning code is just not the way to do it. This needs to happen. We do have issues that address, that have been addressed, but they need to be addressed by the state and truly federal authorities here.
Mr. Better?
Well, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Rodvian asked for some opinions from the table. Maybe it would be good if I passed it down the table for a quick second.
If that would be, I would greatly appreciate the ask.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Geddin to say a few words, and then we'll pass it along.
Good evening. Toni Geddin, Anarondale County Health Officer. So this is an issue that I've talked with my colleagues, Sandy and Adrian, about pretty extensively. And as an instrument of the state, when it comes to our authority to regulate certified recovery homes, there are things that we need in code and things that we need to match at a state level to be very helpful. I think there are things that you all have been working through at a county level that could help, but I do think for us, a lot of what we are doing as regulators is following rules that are set forth by the state, and so working with BHA and others to make sure that those things are in line. Now, whether or not that means that we need to wait is really a question for you all, but that is how we go about doing this work, and the authority is given to us via the state as the local behavioral health authority to go out and do these sorts of inspections. So when they get complaints and we're asked to go out and do inspections and see what's happening, there is a decent amount of work that happens there, but we also have to follow what's in state legislation. And so I'll hand it to my colleague Sandy O'Neil, the Director of Behavioral Health, if she has any additional comments.
Thank you, Sandy O'Neil, Department of Health, Behavioral Health. I really don't have much that I can add to that. We will continue and do, and I think one of the speakers referenced this, that if there are complaints or concerns, we go out on every single one of those. And our goal is to bring people into alignment and make sure that the folks that they're serving get the best that they need. We do not have the ability, if we find something, we refer it up to state, and then we work with the Behavioral Health Association to try to get those things resolved. We don't have, our authority comes from the state. It's not local authority.
Carissa Kelly, Director of Department of Aging and Disabilities. I would really just add to my colleagues that we have different federal and state agencies, even lumped together in this bill. We have the Developmental Disabilities Administration, the Office of Healthcare Quality. So whereas we have the recovery residences, DDA group homes, we have 214 in the county, we are not the authority or regulator for those, and we don't monitor those. The 113 small community-based assisted livings, we follow the regulations of Office of Healthcare Quality, but we do in fact monitor those facilities. So this is, this is a bigger picture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll come back to that if she can have some, but go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to bring us back to the amendment at hand that we were discussing, and specifically, and really only amendment, only the amendment at this time. Earlier tonight, on 7123, we passed an amendment knowing that there was going to be a Earlier tonight, on 7123, we passed an amendment, knowing that there was going to be a little bit more work that needed to happen, in a, between now and a future council session. I had no problem supporting the, the ability for the sponsor and for the council to be able to do so. And so I am taking that same application tonight, and it is the same position that I feel on the amendment before us with 7423. The sponsor has indicated a willingness to continue to talk to people, to continue to work. I believe that it's worth passing this amendment, providing the same courtesy that we've provided earlier on another bill, to this one as well, and that, that's explanation, I will be supporting this amendment tonight. I think it's just, honestly, it's the, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For IMP, I come in, right, I own a group home. What's the current process if I buy an existing single-family house, and I say, "I want to take that existing single-family and turn it into a group home"? What does the application process look like? Is it a change of use? Does it trigger sprinklers? What does that all look like from IMP's standpoint on a group home, at present?
Andrew McCarr, inspections and permits. At present, it would, you start with the amount of people. I'm assuming you're probably talking about between five and 16 people.
You, you start wherever you want, because I'm gonna assume everybody up here has no clue.
Gotcha.
Which kind of seems obvious, but let's keep going, so, go ahead.
So if you're under five people, you're still a house, to the building code.
Yep.
You don't need to have a permit at all, you're just a house. If you're between five and 16 to the building code, then you're a change of use, you're an R4 in the building code.
Let me pause you there for a second. Where is that in the code? What is it that causes that to happen?
Well, you would start in the International Existing Building Code.
Okay.
There's a definition for a change of use or change of occupancy, you'd look in there, it would say, you know, yes, you're going from a single-family dwelling, changing from an R4.
So if we have a single-family dwelling where people are living and they're not a group home, but then they turn into a group home, in our code already, we say, "This triggers a change of use," true?
Correct.
But we don't do that for recovery residences, do we?
So group home is a defined term in the building code.
Correct, yeah.
Recovery residence is not a defined term in the building code, so that's where there's always been this gray area of, "What are they?"
Right. So if I'm a smart provider, and I want to avoid sprinklers, I would call myself a recovery residence, right?
I can't speak to what they would do.
Seems reasonable, you wouldn't have to do sprinklers if you call yourself a recovery residence, right?
In the building code, if you don't meet the definition of a group home, I guess that is a gray area.
Right, okay, and are you all forcing recovery residences at this point to do sprinklers?
Currently, no.
Oh, okay, and I think like the fire chief and maybe the fire marshal are here, potentially, they could speak to this too, but, so, in a group home, when you get over five people, when you get to six, that triggers a change of use, now we start talking about sprinklers. Am I following you correctly?
Correct.
So what are the different thresholds of sprinkler requirements when you get into a change of use for a group home?
So if you're between five and 16, it's the same requirement, it's an NFPA 13D system with a couple modifications.
Okay.
NFPA 13D system is the one you would put in a house, if you're building a new house. The big modifications would be all habitable rooms need to be, also have a sprinkler, which they don't, need to have in a single-family dwelling, porches would need to have a sprinkler, which they don't, in a single-family dwelling, and the water supply would have to increase to a 30-minute water supply versus a 10-minute water supply, really only matters if you're on a pump and tank system.
Okay.
But that's when you're between five and 16 people in a group home. When you get above 16 people, you're really no longer a group home, it's what's called institutional in the building code.
Sure.
And I think that's kind of outside the scope of what everyone's talking about here.
Yeah, it is. So how do we decide if someone comes in and puts in an application to IMP and says, "Hey, I have an existing single-family, and I'm converting it into a recovery residence," or "I'm converting it to a group home"? Who picks whether they're a recovery residence or a group home?
Technically, I would, but I would ask the applicant, "What are you, what care are you providing?"
So what, yeah, what do you look at to determine whether it is a group home or whether it's a recovery residence? What do you assess?
So the definition of a group home in the building code is a facility for social rehabilitation, substance abuse, or mental health problems that contains a group housing arrangement that provides custodial care but does not provide medical care.
Okay, so that's a group home.
Correct.
What's a recovery residence? That's under 6123, right? That's where we defined that?
In the building code?
Well, I think bill 6123 that passed, as I said earlier, that came back at the last, or two meetings ago, that defines a recovery residence. So how do you differentiate between the two, between a group home and a recovery residence? Do you look at licensure? Do you look at the care they're providing? Do you look at some certifications? How do you make that distinction?
Well, now with Bill 6123, you know, now we have a definition, which is in the International Residential Code, it refers to the definition of the zoning code, so we say, "Well, do you meet this?", and then, "Are you MCOR certified or not?"
Are you what?
MCOR certified.
Okay, so if you're MCOR certified, then you have no sprinkler requirement, right?
Under the new bill, correct.
Okay, and if you're not MCOR certified, then what is your requirement for sprinklers under the new bill? That's if you're under six people, there's no requirement for sprinklers. If you're over it, you're required to get sprinklers, right?
Correct.
Okay, and with group homes, if you're over six people, six or more, you're required to get sprinklers, right?
Correct.
Okay. So with this definition that we have in the bill, where we say, "Recovery residence means a facility providing alcohol-free or illicit drug-free housing to individuals with substance-related disorders or addictive disorders, or co-occurring mental disorders and substance-related disorders or addictive disorders, and that does not include onsite clinical treatment services and does not condition occupancy on participation in Level 2.5 or above substance abuse disorder treatment services offered by the operator or any affiliate thereof." What is it that that's going to ultimately require of an applicant to IMP who currently says, "I'm a recovery residence"? What is that gonna require for them to do? Like, how's it gonna change? Because I've heard from a bunch of people who've come up and testified and said, "It's gonna be onerous, the definitions are different, this creates a major headache for us, it's a huge problem," specifically walking through from an IMP perspective? Because I heard people talk about change of use, and I'm worried about that. You already have some of that, don't you? What's the difference? Why, why is this so problematic from an enforcement standpoint? The regulators, as Mr. Barron referred to you all, is, you know, the folks who don't know how to implement this, I guess.
I mean, I guess the start to this definition is in the zoning code.
Right. Would you rather it be in the, in Article 13, or, not 13, but, yeah, 15? Would you rather it be there? Would that be better?
I mean, I leave that up to the council, but--
Okay. Is that a suggestion from IMP?
Not a suggestion per se.
Okay. So, again, what is this definition going to change, practically speaking, for an applicant who comes in and says, "I'm going from a single-family use to now being a recovery residence"? What does this change that creates a problem for them?
From a building code standpoint?
Mm-hmm.
It just, you know, now they could say to us, "They're a recovery residence," per this definition.
Per what?
Per this definition.
Right, right. And so ultimately, you would have something, I think, if this definition passes, where you could say, "They either are conditioning care on this, or they're not," and so you would objectively be able to say, "They're a recovery residence, or they're a group home," am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so this seems to me like this clarifies for you as the regulators exactly what's going on with an applicant, so you know exactly which basket or bucket, whatever you want to call it, to put them in. Is that fair?
Correct, I will say, in the same manner, 6123 put a definition as well.
Right, understood, and I think without this, we don't have that sort of triggering that tells you exactly which bucket to put them in.
Correct.
Thank you. So ultimately, this bill does do something, it does actually help from a zoning enforcement standpoint and an inspection standpoint, it does actually give you objective criteria to look at, to know exactly what is happening when an applicant comes to you, and from a practical standpoint, it allows you to do your job better. Is that fair?
In this particular instance, sure.
Thank you.
I want to go to you, and then briefly, we're gonna get ready to close up so we can vote. Did you have a comment?
Thank you, I was just going to first reiterate that this is a conforming amendment. I appreciate Mr. Volkey walking through the steps to explain that it would not be abnormal to have this type of language in the zoning code, it would actually make a gray area, not so gray anymore. And I just want to remind everyone here that we just, for the second night, or the second meeting in a row, amended a bill with over two dozen amendments in a two-week time period. Considering, I know the sponsor of this legislation has worked for years on this topic, and we have three weeks' worth of amendment potential ahead of us, again, I encourage my colleagues not to cut this bill off at its knees and give it its time that it deserves.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I have a quick question for a definition. Substance abuse disorder, is that considered a mental health disorder? That might be for Department of Health.
Yes, but I'll also defer to Sandy O'Neill, if she has anything to add to that as a mental health clinician.
Sandy O'Neill, Department of Health, no, it falls under the diagnosis, the same level that a mental health diagnosis would, so.
Okay, so it does. I'm just clarifying, when I look at the definitions for a group home, and the limits on it says, you know, that would include people with intellectual, developmental, physical disabilities, or mental health issues, and substance abuse falls under that mental health issues, that would be there for that definition. I do have, just as I raised before about the community-based assisted living facilities that I think are being pulled into this and could cause complications with those, I also still have some concerns about our homes for people with developmental disabilities. There's an inconsistency, there is one that, that, there's a phrase in here that exempts them, "They have no more than six occupants," which again is inconsistent with the definition of group home, which is eight occupants, that we're hearing, and so I'm, those little things, and I'm sure I'm not catching all of them, really raise concerns for me that we're bringing too many people in this umbrella as we try to address some concerns with recovery homes, that we're, have the potential to really negatively impact our assisted living, our developmental disabilities homes, and that's a, that's a real risk that we have. And so I just wanted to make sure and point that out in the public, that those are, I don't think that those are sufficiently exempted from those new standards in here, and that we could really be harming ourselves in not just the substance abuse area, but also in our service to our elderly disabled individuals. So, thank you.
All right, and lastly, I'll just say, just to be, because I want to be consistent with how I conduct myself up here when it comes to courtesy and things like that, in my mind, this amendment, or this bill in general, is a continuation of a bill that we were working on in July. It literally impacts the same sort of activities that we were doing, so while this is a, numerically a different bill, its intent and its purpose is literally driven to impact the same thing we were discussing for the last four or five months, and what I wanted out of that process was this, this separated review from folks who, again, who doesn't really stand to gain from this, to be objective, and, and so for me, that hasn't happened yet, and so whether it's now or in two weeks, I'm not sure that the whole bill, I'm still gonna, because I'm concerned, just as I was in July, if, if we're putting any bets at risk of being lost, I don't want to do that while we're trying to figure out what the real issue is and how we solve that problem. So that's where I'm at on this whole process, so, Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, amendment number one has been defeated.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number, I'll make a blank up here, 7423?
Bill number 7423, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Codes and Supplements, Fire Prevention Code, Zoning, Group Homes, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities, and Recovery Residences.
All right, is there any final comments?
I just want to say, I'm, I'm, it saddens me that this has gotten so contentious in some ways, because I believe we all have the same intent, which is to provide the best care possible for all of our individuals who are battling substance abuse. And, and so I think we all want that, and we haven't, we've found some common ground, but we haven't been able to find all of the common ground, so I'm gonna continue to work on this. We have a couple of resolutions coming out that I, that I hope will pass unanimously on this council, that, that affirm our, all of our commitment to moving forward. And as we said earlier, I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the head of the Health and Government Affairs Committee about this very issue, and talk, and drafting, and helping to work together for some legislation that will address this on the state level, but I agree too with what Ms. Fiedler said, we can't put, throw everything, and put all of our hopes on the state, because it doesn't always come through, but I am going to put my full efforts in that in the coming months, and that we can work together on this, but I have, I have some grave concerns with this bill, but, and I want us to get it right, so, but, no, I believe we all have the same goals for this, we've just got to find the right path forward.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this has been a long, drawn-out night, and issue with this council, I'm just gonna repeat what I said earlier, the inconsistencies with Comar and the state, and regulating healthcare through the zoning code, I, I haven't really changed my position since the summer, but I think it is time to move on as a council and let 6123 stand as code, and see where we go from there, and work with our state partners to continue to serve and make sure we have a robust continuum of care, both in the recovery community, and in our community-based assisted living, and our group homes for the IDD community that conforms with state law and federal law, and we keep serving our most vulnerable residents. So I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Volkey?
I'm gonna withdraw this bill, I appreciate everybody coming out.
Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 4123.
Resolution Number 4123, resolution urging the State of Maryland to enact new laws relating to truth in marketing and patient brokering and kickbacks for substance use disorder treatment providers and facilities.
All right. Mr. Barron?
I think it's my bill.
Was it yours?
Yeah, this is a council resolution.
Yep, I'm gonna withdraw this one, too.
As a cosponsor, can I ask that it still go forward?
You can.
Yeah, you can, actually.
You're allowed. I mean, I don't know. 5104-F says that a sponsor can withdraw a bill, what's the about a resolution, Ms. Corby?
It's Rule 5106.
So is that an objection?
A sponsor may withdraw a resolution at any time before a final vote is taken unless the resolution has been amended or another member objects.
I object to withdrawing it, and I would like to move forward with this resolution, please.
Mr. Barron?
Sure, and I'll turn it over to the experts at the table, but I think one of the consistent refrains that we have heard is how complex this issue is, and what a large group of state and federal regulators and overseeing agencies are involved and touch this issue. Having worked at the state level, I know how serious the Chair of the Health and Government Operations Committee takes these issues, I, I know how important the General Assembly as a whole takes these issues, and, and they, this, the issues that were raised in the debates over the summer, and, and through this bill that was just withdrawn, we see how complicated the issue is, and how challenging it is for a local government to take unilateral action. State action is, is a better place for, for change and to address some of the issues that have been raised, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Geddin to add anything, but we support this resolution, and, and the administration stands ready to assist our partners at the General Assembly as they tackle the issue.
Thank you, Toni Geddin, Anarondale County Health Officer. As I mentioned previously, we do investigate complaints, we do get complaints that allege things that this bill would address, such as folks-- things that this bill would address, such as folks being encouraged to stay in a recovery house, accordance for housing, and, and things of that nature. Those complaints are difficult to substantiate, and it is something that we do with the state. So anything that we find during our investigation is handed up to the state for them to then decide how to deal with it thereafter. And again, we are an arm of the state, they can also decide to investigate things themselves. It really just depends on how, how the state wants to handle it, but that is what we are required to do. And so we do get these complaints, I can't tell you the frequency necessarily, but it does come through. And again, because it's not often in writing, and it can be problematic for folks sometimes, it's one of those things that we look into, and we do our best, and then we take those findings up to the state.
We'll now open, Mr. Volkey?
I'm just struggling with this. I remember I sat here for all of 5523, that whole discussion, nobody from the admin or the panel came in and said that this was a problem. In fact, well, my colleague said, PHP with a pillow, that's not a thing, like, that's not an issue, what are we regulating here? This doesn't make sense. Nobody stood up. But now, all of a sudden, with this resolution, everybody says, well, there is a problem. Fascinating, I'm just struggling. Please remove me as a co-sponsor on this resolution.
I'd just like to say that I said, when I was here previously, the almost exact same thing, that it is our role to investigate, we have investigated complaints of this nature, and they are difficult to substantiate, because it's not often in policy or procedure, individuals may no longer be in the home, or people are at risk of, if, you know, there's chances of people losing housing. And so these aren't things that, in most cases, when we've looked into them and investigated them, and again, we take our findings to the state, that it's something that is substantiated when we go out to investigate the complaint. But it's not that the complaints are never coming in, it happens, it's not all that frequent, but we do get those complaints.
All right. I'm not sure which one you, Ms. Hummer?
I'm just going to say it's disappointing that my colleague has withdrawn his name, because he and I worked on this together for a long time to get this, because I believe that we both want the best care possible, and we state in here that we are urging the state to enact new laws relating to truth in marketing and patient brokering and kickbacks for substance use disorder treatment providers and facilities, that we are stressing that we, if this is a problem, which from all accounts we're hearing, it does happen, we want full, full backing by the state to put an end to these practices. And so I still stand by this, it states, everything that we've all been saying is that we want providers to work together, that our goal is to provide the best care possible for all of our residents who are suffering from substance abuse disorder. And we need the state to come alongside us in a stronger manner to make sure that these houses are appropriately monitored and, and maintained. So I urge my other colleagues to please stand by this resolution.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with, with Ms. Hummer, there was a lot of work put into this resolution. I actually don't think anyone on this council has purported that there isn't issues within the recovery continuum. I know from, I know more about this than I ever thought I would. But we also know that the ASAM continuum that Maryland adopts as they go out to license and level different treatment facilities is, is also in the process of being reformed and changed. And here we are, trying to address things that are, are happening at the state level in the Department of Behavioral Health, the Department of Health, and it's, and it's sort of fluid right now. It's disappointing that, I'm not exactly sure why the, the conversation has gotten heated, I don't really understand. But I would like the council to support this resolution.
Ms. Hummer? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. I actually want to say to my colleague, Mr. Volkey, I think the one thing that you have persuaded me throughout this, through working on these multiple bills, is that we do need to be looking carefully at PHP with a pillow. And I hope I've expressed that. I've just come to the conclusion that we don't really have the best tools to do that. But I appreciate the work that you've done here, and because you have made me, and I think many others, aware of an issue that we need to be looking at, and now we are taking action to get the appropriate parties, which I believe is the state, to, to, to really dig in a little deeper here. So, thank you.
And just to add to that, depending on the outcome of, of this relationship that we develop with the state, if there's legislation at the county level that needs to be enacted after that review, I will 100% be here to say, yep. Mr. Volkey, this is your legislation, and I'll stand right here behind you.
Hey.
Okay.
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we had an opportunity to actually take real steps on this with 55, it was rejected by the council. We had real steps to take action on this with 74, it's been rejected by the council. This resolution, while it would have been a nice add-on to those things, because it would have called on the state to do certain things, instead is really like a pat on the back to say, hey, look, we did something about this problem. We had a chance to do something about the problem, choice was not to do it. So ultimately, I'm not going to stand by, even though we did work hard on this, Ms. Hummer and I did, and I appreciate her work on it, but I'm not going to stand by after we had a real chance to, like, do something, and say, well, we're going to pat ourselves on the back, because we actually, you know, we told the state, hey, state, do this, when we did have the tools at our disposal. We have had now two iterations of what the tools look like at our disposal, in varying forms, that we could have passed, that certainly would have at least helped our state partners. Instead, we've said, we don't want to do that, kick the can to the state, I hope something happens to the state, I agree with you, I would love to see that, and if there is enabling legislation, or there's legislation that comes back to the county, sure, let's take a look at it. But I just really reject the idea that we don't have the tools, or we didn't have the ability to do this. We had every ability to do this, we had every opportunity to do it, we've chosen not to. Now we're going to pass this resolution, and we're going to pat ourselves on the back and say, we did something about this. We had a real chance to do something about this, we didn't.
So I'll go ahead and state that I don't think we didn't do any, I think we are taking meaningful steps here with either the previous legislation that did impact it by at least naming it. My concern was whether or not we were going to impact current beds that are in play. So while we figure out what the solution is, I did not want to risk, for me, losing any beds that are serving citizens who are continuing through that continuum of care during their recovery. And so there are, and there were, providers who, who felt like they were, that that was a real risk. And so as we figure out what the right solution to address the PHP, because that's what this really is all about, I wanted to make, for me, I wanted to make sure that we didn't impact those who are currently being provided that care or lose a bed. So that's where I was on the issue. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, this is, this is my final statement on this bill. There were, I had very serious concerns, and, and I was opposed to provisions in Bill 5523, and some of those carried over into this bill, 7423, but, but also inconsistencies with state law, and scooping up and affecting our community-based assisted living and our IDD group homes. You have not once acknowledged that the bill that is, was before us tonight was messy and problematic, and ran afoul of state law. There might have been something, some little nugget in there that addressed an issue that we've been talking about all summer, but it also then had a lot of either intended or unintended consequences into other classifications of group homes. The state classifies a group home as a single-family home, and states that conditions, any other conditions cannot be put on it. So I think our code, as it exists today, runs afoul of state law. But it's, it's not fair for you to sit here and say you've solved a problem, when the problem, the, the solution you presented was also had either, like I said, intended or unintended consequences into other areas, and you've, you're not acknowledging it. But this isn't therapy, so I'm going to end now, and I'm a no on this bill, I mean, I'm a yes on this resolution.
Please, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Aye. Sorry, that's Ms. Hummer, Susan, aye. Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Abstain.
And Mr. Smith?
It was a little better than a no, I still love you, just want you to know, aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention, resolution number 4123 has been adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4223.
Resolution Number 4223, resolution urging the Anorrida County Executive to establish a grant program to assist recovery residences with installing fire suppression systems.
All right. Who's was that, was that yours as well? That's the one I'd also mentioned earlier that I was going to be a co-sponsor, okay, just clarify.
I mean, the bill does what it says it does, right? It suggests to the county exec to set up a grant fund, I talked to the county exec's folks, they don't want us to set it up, because they're worried we'll mess it up, that's fair. So we'll push it to the budget office, and you guys can develop whatever that should be, based on the opioid abatement funds that we get, and try to help to create a path for recovery residences, to make their residences safer for their residents by having these sprinklers. So ask for your support, thanks.
And you will have it, see, that's something you have done, just FYI. Mr. Barr?
Interesting description, Mr. Volkey. So the administration, we intend to bring down a first-quarter transfer bill, several members of the administration, I'm going to turn it over to Tony, talk a little bit about the work that's already been done in setting up this grant program, but it is in progress, and it is something we have been working on. Or maybe it's Sandy should talk about it, give her the looks next to me.
No, we can, we can share the mic, for sure. So we have, in the Health Department, started putting out grants for this and working through, we have examples of things that we do now within the department, not within behavioral health, but ways of looking at income levels, and in this case, it'd be a business, so revenue generated, to determine who is eligible for what, and to what extent, and what amount, and so I'll hand it to Sandy for more details.
Thank you, Sandy O'Neil, Department of Health. Yes, I've had some conversations with both Dr. Geddin and with the administration about what a community-based grant system for this would look like, what some of the considerations are, we have not worked out what those details are, including what the income limitations may or may not be, and what qualifies under the, in particular, under the opioid abatement funds, but that is in process, and I believe that it's going to go through, because you'll see something in October.
Awesome. Ms. Hummer?
I would just like to ask to be added to this resolution as well, please.
All right, any additional comments, seeing no additional lights from council members, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution 4223. Madam Secretary, did we hear, receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair, there was one submission received, everyone on the dais received a copy, it's included in that summary posted online, and it will be added to the record.
All right, now, do you see anyone that signed up and advanced? Is there anyone that wishes to speak on 4223? All right, we have one, please come up. If there's anybody else, we're going to close the public hearing right after this. Sir, go ahead.
My name is William Small, I'm a constituent from Annapolis, Maryland, and I would like to say that if there is accommodations that are going to be made for recovery houses, that it might be good for the council to apply them to all affordable living circumstances, such as group homes, that people are looking to, to, to create creative housing, there's co-living houses that may not be, that may also call for sprinkles, if, if these, if some of the, some of the language that I understood earlier applies, such as if there's six or more different residents in a house, well, if you're going to impose sprinklers on all of those residences, then you're going to increase the cost of living for all of those, for those, increase the cost of operating those facilities, and that would inherently increase, or increase the cost of housing, making such housing less affordable. So it seems like if the state or the county is going to impose costs, then it might want to apply grants that would apply to some, to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Returning seat, thank you. Public hearing, public hearing on Resolution 4223 is now closed. And just a caveat, that opioid abatement fund has, will probably have specific restrictions on what it can be utilized for, when it comes to the opioid addiction and that sort of chain link that's associated, tied to it, correct?
That is correct. Opioid abatement funds do have to be specifically used for things that are recovery and addictions.
Correct, correct, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear for the, for the public.
I just wanted to make sure you actually saw me.
No, 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 go ahead.
Because sometimes I think you don't see it out of the corner of your eye. I would like to also be added as a co-sponsor to 4223.
Any additional comments from, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4223.
I was going to ask. Resolution Number 4223, resolution urging the Anorrida County Executive to establish a grant program to assist recovery residences with installing fire suppression systems.
All right, any final discussions? Seeing none, and because of Mr. Volkey, we're going to have sprinkler systems in recovery houses. See, moving the needle. Probably should use different verbiage. It's getting late here. Is there, you said what? Any final discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4223.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, resolution number 4223 has been adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4323.
Resolution Number 4323, resolution supporting Medicare for All and urging federal and state legislators representing Anorrida County to work toward enactment of Medicare for All to Guarantee Comprehensive Healthcare for All Americans.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, so I just want to say thank you to the folks that I know came specifically for this resolution, for waiting three hours and 12 minutes, plus whatever you, time you got here before our meeting started, to, you know, to come and testify on this issue. I think at this point, gosh, I mean, after the pandemic, if we didn't realize the importance of having a Medicare for All system before the pandemic, I feel like we should absolutely know now. We have, I think of, you know, I think of healthcare as having multiple parties, we have the patients, we have the care providers, and we have the billing folks who work with the care providers, and then we have the insurance companies. And Medicare for All takes out one of the biggest expenses in healthcare, and that's the insurance companies. We're still going to be paying for the healthcare. In fact, if we take out that profit motive out of the equation, we have even, we, we could still save money and get better care, and better care for everyone. And really, how, how can you look at, how can you look at, at someone who is struggling? How can you look at someone who is struggling with a health condition and say, sorry, you can't get care, we can't afford it? We're the wealthiest nation in the world, is that still true? I think we still are. We can do this, and every other developed nation, in fact, I think you can even, I've heard of people making trips to Mexico to actually get care covered that they can't get in the United States, because they don't, because they don't have insurance here. My sister likes to travel, she got horribly sick when she was in England, she ended up spending a couple days in the, I'm sorry, Susan, I'm telling this story about you, but she ended up spending a couple days in the hospital there, and barely spent a penny. Like, how much would a hospital stay cost, a two-day hospital stay cost in the United States? I don't even want to think about that. If I had to pay for that out of pocket, you know, we're all, you know, we all have all kinds of debt, it's everywhere in our country, and that just would add to the pile. And actually, medical debt is, I think, the leading, number one cause of personal bankruptcy, is personal bankruptcy because of medical debt, and that's just unacceptable. This is also a huge race disparity. In fact, if you look at the history of how we ended up with a system that doesn't cover everyone, it's because of racism. It was because the folks crafting the system wanted some people included and others not, and it's time to actually push back against a policy that was created in the intent of leaving some out. It's time. So, let's see, everyone gets covered, that's great. That's great. Having it tied to work? Well, if you're really, really sick, you might not even be able to have a job. You might not be able to work. And so how fair is that, that our insurance is tied to work? And then you're so sick you can't work and then you can't get healthcare on top of that? That's just, that's, that's like a cruelty that I don't think we should accept in the United States. Gosh, if everyone has healthcare, then they'll go get it when they need it. And that means we'll get better outcomes. Medicare for All still allows choice of providers, certainly simplifies billing. You don't have to go and get pre-approvals for this and that. Just let the doctors make the decisions. Smaller administrative burden, you get that whole, you get that whole insurance piece out. And I'm sorry, I'm sure the insurance companies don't want to be hearing this, but it's, it's true. It's fiscally responsible. We save money and we get better outcomes. This really should be a no-brainer. And I know people say, oh, that's socialist, that's socialist. You know what? We have lots of socialist things in the United States. As a public school teacher, I am fully aware that my kids come in to clap, well, sorry, I'm temporarily not teaching in the public schools. But as a 17-year public school teaching veteran, I'm fully aware that my students walk in the door and they, they don't pay anything beyond what their families and their community has already contributed in taxes. We, roads, our courts, our military, those are all things that serve all of us. Why, why doesn't healthcare fit in the same category? It absolutely does. It absolutely should. And so with that, I ask for your support of Resolution number 4323.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Executive strongly supports this resolution. This is obviously a statement of the county council, but just to add our voice to the, to the chorus here, Councilwoman Rodvian hit a number of points there, but I want to bring something local. There are 25,000 uninsured people in this county. County government, we just passed-
Mr. Chair, point of order, if I may?
Yes.
This is a council resolution? Is it, are we allowed, I mean, is this permitted?
Yeah, we've taken the, after we made our opening remarks, have invited them to even make remarks on resolutions.
Okay.
Usually they'll say their remarks will be, you know, this is a council resolution, we have no comment, or we support it, but it's your decision.
I mean, it is this council's decision. This would be the voice of the council speaking. I'm adding the county executive's perspective. He's been on public support on record for years on this resolution, the subject of this resolution.
Understood, understood. But it's a council resolution. So I was just trying to clarify because I know we have done appointment resolutions and the administration has said this is a council decision. This is a council resolution. So, any thoughts? Just want to make sure we're-
Matthew Bennett, Legislative Council. It's within the discretion of the council whether you want to allow the administration to come in and run.
Okay. So in this case, we are allowing the administration?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, now that that's resolved, so the, I think what, maybe we don't want to talk about, Ms. Fiedler, is that there are 25,000 of our neighbors that don't have healthcare. The county council is the final fiscal authority of the county. County employs thousands of people. We are responsible for providing and paying for the healthcare of our employees as well as the employees of the school system. That all comes to you in the budget. You are all well aware of that. County, Anarundel County Community College, all of it, about $86 million in healthcare costs. County OPEB retiree healthcare, our Pago piece, 28 million. Anarundel County Community College, OPEB, Pago, 1.5. Library, OPEB, Pago, not 0.9 million, or 0.9, $900,000. Non-BOE total, 117 million. The BOE Health Insurance Fund contribution is 164 million. Total of all funds, FY budget, FY '24 budget is 281 million. So Medicare for All won't make healthcare free. Somebody's got to pay. But the county is investing in that money. We're paying into a private healthcare system. Having a Medicare for All option would reduce costs. It works in every other civilized country. And if you just look at the number of that per capita dollar spending here in America for healthcare, we're about 33% more than the next spending in another jurisdiction, in another country. So if our healthcare option, or healthcare outcomes, it's late, if our healthcare outcomes were 33% better, I think there could be still an argument that maybe a universal single-payer system is not, is not appropriate. County Executive believes it is. This hope the county council would join him in adding your voice to the support of this initiative. But at the end of the day, it has to be done nationally, and this is just a statement calling on Congress to take action.
Yes, just for the record, I was just trying to clarify what this council is allowing the administration to speak on versus what we are not. I am fully open to discussion this evening. I am fully ready with ears open. At no point in time did I ever say, I don't want to hear anything. So it was truly a clarification comment or question. So for the record, thank you.
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. There were eight submissions made through that online testimony tool. I think every council member got an email. It's included in the summary that's posted online and they will go into the record for this resolution.
All right. We have some motivated speakers who have signed up in advance and waited patiently for this. So can I get Mr. Robert Smith? Please come forward. Ms. Chrissy Holt? Yasmin Jameson? There are, hold. Please state your name and address of work. We'll give you two minutes and we'll start off with Mr. Smith.
Yes, I'm Robert E. Smith. I live at 1487 Chatham Court in Crofton, Maryland. Let me start back in the beginning. So back in, so I've been an advocate for a single payer healthcare for over 15 years. So back in 2008, I saw, what got me into this was I saw a World Health Organization chart ranking all the industrialized countries of the world on all the key, like, public health figures. Not only did the U.S. rank in the bottom third, and even in some cases, dead last on all these figures, what floored me was seeing that a country like Cuba had better infant mortality rate outcomes than our country. And that just, that floored me in the sense that this, that basically, like, that meant that in that country, that has the 10th of the wealth and resources that we have in this country, a child in the first year of its life has a better chance of surviving than in this country, which should speak volumes to the health disparities in this country. With that being said, though, I understand that this isn't my first time speaking before this council and that this isn't the first time a resolution that has a national impact has come before the council. And what I've heard back then is, why is the council weighing in on something that's national? This, I believe, if Medicare for All passes, as it's been specified, the county will, the county government, just in its day-to-day operation, will significantly benefit from that. One of the estimates we got that approximately the county would save 122 million annually just in the operating cost alone. You just had a bill here tonight that would probably be irrelevant because you wouldn't have to deal with that with the 6812, I believe, if we had Medicare for All, because everybody would be in. So I put that within mind. So it seems very appropriate for this council to weigh in on national Medicare for All. Finally, I want to say that Medicare for All is not a new idea. Not only it is the norm and how most nations, industrialized nations, provide healthcare to their citizens. When President, back, President Truman introduced what eventually became Medicare way back in the 40s. Now, I know it didn't get passed until 65 under Johnson.
Please say my name.
Yes. But what I'm trying to say is that the U.S. healthcare system is the aberration. And we've had over 80 years of this system working, and what hasn't it given us data-wise? We pay twice as much for healthcare for significantly less health outcome. It's not the right one. We have data that single payer works-
Thank you.
And it's more efficient, and I ask that you vote for the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Scopio?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Hi. I'm a practicing physician, not in Anarundel County, but in Baltimore, Maryland. And believe me, I have been in practice for over 40 years. And during that time, the last five years or so, I have provided healthcare for the state of Maryland, the prison system. I provided urologic care. I'm a practicing neurologist. I provided urologic care for the prison system. And I'd just like to bring out an anecdotal situation. I had a 66-year-old male diagnosed to have prostate cancer. The poor gentleman was facing, the decision was made within the prison system because of his advanced disease that he would be discharged from prison. He would be sent home from prison. He had a choice of either being treated in prison or sent home. I mean, that's a difficult decision for anybody to have to deal with. Anyway, the gentleman made a very questionable decision. He chose to be discharged from, from, let go from the prison. With that, he was faced with, how do I manage this situation that I have of prostate cancer? He contacted the gynec, the oncologist. He contacted the oncologist who had seen him a couple of times. The oncologist, in turn, once he found out that I had established his diagnosis, contacted me. And believe me, it took everything possible to get this man insurance coverage because he was released from prison and, and the situation was so intense for him that we worked with him night and day, contacting insurance companies and explaining to them his situation. Finally, he was able to get insurance coverage, which was very, very difficult.
Thank you.
And even after obtaining insurance coverage, he found himself working with a social worker. He had a social worker assigned to him through his insurance company. I mean, he was just lucky to have got that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate the remarks.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're going to go over to Ms. Holt.
Hi, Chrissy Holt at 8 Fifth Circle in Annapolis, Maryland. So I'm asking you to vote in support of the resolution for Medicare for All. After five long years, we're back to testify that healthcare is actually a human right and a local issue proven by the global pandemic that crippled our economy and killed over a million Americans, more than any other country, due to inadequate access to healthcare and corruption in our U.S. healthcare system. A living amend today for previous even rude behavior in the past would be a yes vote for the resolution tonight. And you wouldn't be alone because 69% of all Americans support universal healthcare with Medicare for All. City of Annapolis has passed a resolution, Montgomery County, PG County, City of Frederick, Rockville, and 125 other cities and counties across America today. Congressman John Sarbanes has already voted yes for the Medicare for All bill in 2023 like he has in the past. Other facts to consider is that according to the Congressional Budget Office, Medicare for All would save, there's no question here about can we afford Medicare for All? We would save $650 billion a year. So Republicans, listen up. This isn't about being able to afford. And if you were so interested in sprinklers a minute ago, then maybe you would be interested in really how do people in long-term recovery get access? And the way they get access is through Medicare for All, not through an insurance decision that denies care over and over again. As of today, the Medicaid tracker shows that 115,000 Marylanders have been dropped from Medicaid. Who's tracking that? And you know what happens when you're, when you're dropped from Medicaid? You get kicked out of rehab because that's what people are using to stay in long-term recovery. So when we take a look at what happened, Hogan sold Medicaid just before the pandemic to United Healthcare. The United Healthcare CEO banked a salary of $23.8 million in 2022. And we tried to go back and sue him, the state of Maryland, saying, hey, we prepaid for these patients. You need to give us our money back. And Maryland delegation didn't vote that through because 2/3 of the Maryland state budget goes to healthcare. Let me reframe that. 2/3 of the Maryland state budget goes to Blue Cross, Care First, and United Health Insurance Companies. And when we have insurance, we don't actually get care.
Please say my name.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bruce?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodvian, for introducing this very important resolution. I'm happy to be here tonight to support my friend Chrissy Holt, who's been working on this for a very long time. And I was really happy to be here and see Councilwoman Hummer introduce her favorite pizza place and their award today. And, but because of the reason that I'm here to talk about healthcare, I couldn't help but want to point out to all of you that those people struggle to afford any kind of health insurance. And I know this because I've been a self-employed person for 25 years in this county. The waitresses and the waiters and the cooks in their shop probably have zero healthcare. As a self-employed person, I've had to buy my own insurance the whole time I've lived here. I was happy when Obamacare came because pre-existing conditions were wiped out, but it didn't do me any favors financially. Year after year, my rates would go up for, I probably spent, I don't know, $5,000 to $6,000 a year in my monthly premiums with between $1,000 and $5,000 deductibles. I did not go, I couldn't go to the doctor. The doctor visits I did get were my one visit a year for a well woman and a mammogram. So I got 10 mammograms in 10 years and 10 well women visits, and I paid $60,000 for that. And that bought that CEO part of some gas maybe for his private jet. But I didn't take that $60,000 and put it in, back into Anarundel County because I didn't have it. It went to those 10 doctor visits and the rest went into the pockets of the insurance company. So it's just, it's bad, it's bad medicine. And we are here, you are all elected. We are, we elect a government to serve the people and to care for the people. So thank you for caring for this and voting affirmative on this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Jameson?
Is it on?
Yep, it's on.
Okay. Hello. My name is Yasmin Jameson. I live at 214 St. Anton's Way in Arnold. I'm here today to share my thoughts on Resolution 43-23 regarding Medicare for All. It's a crucial issue that directly impacts our community, and your vote in favor of this resolution can make a significant difference. Firstly, let me tell you why this resolution matters to me personally. It's ridiculous that my kids and countless others have to stay in a state of financial uncertainty just to have access to Medicaid. We should be working towards a system where healthcare is a basic right for all regardless of income. Our children shouldn't have to bear the burden of financial hardship just to stay healthy. One of the major issues we face here in Anarundel County is the difficulty in finding doctors who- who accept Medicaid. It's a real struggle, and it's not just about having insurance, it's about having access to quality healthcare. Many of our residents, including children and families, are left without options when it comes to finding a doctor who will take their insurance. This is a stark reminder that our current healthcare system isn't working. Additionally, let me share a personal struggle I'm facing. I need an MRI for my knee, but coming up with a copay, even though I have insurance, is really hard. I can't afford it because I'm self-employed and have to pay for my own insurance. And I'm not alone in this situation. Many families in our county are forced to choose between their health and their financial well-being because of high out-of-pocket costs. This is a stark example of how our current system leaves people behind even when they have insurance. Medicare for All is not a radical idea. It's a practical solution to a problem that affects countless families in our community. It's about making sure that healthcare is affordable and accessible to everyone, not just those who can afford it. It's about reducing the stress and financial burden that healthcare costs can place on families. Another fact to consider is that Medicare for All system can help streamline healthcare administration, reducing administrative costs and making system more efficient. This means more of our healthcare dollars go towards actual patient care rather than paperwork. I believe in Anarundel County has to support this resolution. Thank you very much. Please.
Mr. Holt?
Yes, thank you. My name's Arthur Holt. I live at 8 Fisk Circle, and that's here in Annapolis. And I'm grateful to be here. Thank you for all of your service, council members. Appreciate it. These were long nights, so thank you. I'm a healthcare, relatively a healthcare success story, but that didn't happen by accident in the old model where typically you might have two people that end up having kids, and each of them, you know, at least one has a job that has healthcare. And even more so, maybe the second person has a job also, and there's plenty of money, you know? I've got hearing aids, you know? When I was born, and that was not cheap, you know? Insurance paid for about 30% of it, you know? But that's not much of it. When I was born, I was pretty healthy, you know? But my stepson was born with severe hemophilia A. And right off the top, that cost $10,000 a year, you know? And then you can start getting your medication. Now, the pharmaceutical companies try to get around that so they can get their profit, but it all just ends up costing the country more, costing taxpayers more. Medicare for All is a great way to cost, to get better outcomes and to save the taxpayers' money. So with that, I do urge you, please, to vote in favor of the Medicare for All resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. You all, please return to your seats. We're going to call up the next set of speakers. And if we can have Ms. William Small? And Joanne Tsipio? And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on Resolution 43-23, please come forward at this time. We're going to close the public hearing after this panel. So go to Ms. William Small?
Thank you. William Small, constituent from Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you for putting this bill forward, Councilwoman Rodvian, and thanks, everybody, for entertaining it. It seems to me that this conversation exemplifies how the fiscally conservative thing to do would be to not only pass this bill, but actually enact a countywide single-payer system where all the expenses that were just referred to were paid by a county office. And the, I mean, there's 33% profit margin, or there's margin that has been described in the, in Mrs. Rodvian's presentation earlier that currently is going to the profits of these healthcare executives. And we could just as soon create a corporation within the county to do the same exact thing, processing payments from the payers to the providers. And it sounds like Ms. Bruce, who spoke a little bit ago and received about 20 visits for over 10 years for her $60,000 is not an uncommon situation. I would describe my own healthcare expenses the same way and receive substandard care for an exorbitant amount of money. And that's not, that's status quo in our country. And we proclaim ourselves to be this great bastion of something in front of the world while we have substandard healthcare, the basic human right, in my opinion. We could do better, starting with your action to create an entity that provides healthcare for your residents and goes to the purpose, to the, shows that this bill could have real legs in practice. And I encourage you to do that. I would be happy to be one of your participants in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joanne?
I'm Joanne Tsipio. I'm an Annapolis resident and a registered nurse, and I work with patients with their insurance. I'd like to see a single payer. There are many different types of insurance. Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare being two of the main ones, but there are different levels of Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare. And unfortunately, a patient's quality of care is based on the insurance card that they carry. So if you carry a low insurance, you get, your quality of care is not quite as good. Many of the patients choose their insurances if they're not through their work. They choose it based on the cost. So they don't know what kind of insurance they have until they go to use it. When they go to use it and find out that what they need it for is not covered, they're left uninsured. Then they end up going to collection agencies, and if someone already said they have bankruptcy, those kinds of things as a result of that. The older patients are really targeted with, even with Medicare, the different types of Medicare because they have all these managed cares. And I tell them, insurance companies, that they're not managing care, they're managing money. And I fight with insurance companies every day to get claims that are denied, appealed. And I use, I've only had one in all the years I've been working not accepted because I fight for those patients. But what about the patient that does not have an advocate? Medicare for All will take care of that. They don't have to worry about that. You have older people who have $50 deductibles, and many of the older peoples have several different doctors that they have to see. So that's $50 every time they go to see a doctor. That wipes out their pay. So I'd like to see a single payer so that I don't have to work so hard, the patient doesn't have to work so hard, and they get quality care. That's really what's important. We're here to serve our patients.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Enright?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, and members of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live in Huntwood Drive in Gammers, Maryland. The good doctor from Baltimore, his presentation triggered something in my mind concerning prostate cancer, and my service in Vietnam got me prostate cancer. But it taught me the lesson that medical healthcare, comprehensive healthcare for All, is a national security issue. Nobody mentions that. Nobody. I've never heard anybody mention that. Late 1930s, with war looming around the world, Congress of the United States passed the Selective Service Act. We were right at the end of the horrific part of the Great Depression. Healthcare, yeah, right. No healthcare or no basic healthcare. And the selective service kicked in. May of 1941, the NIH published a study that said that 43% of all those American males called up for selective service, 43% were rejected because of health issues. And ironically, the number-one health issue that rejected them, I'll ask a rhetorical question, does anybody know? No. Bad teeth. Bad teeth rejected 43% of all American males called up under the Selective Service Act between '39 and '41. National security issue, comprehensive healthcare for all Americans, affects our national security. Thank you.
And the public hearing on Resolution 43-23 is now closed. Can I take a quick, please, with the title Resolution 43-23?
Resolution Number 43-23. Resolution supporting Medicare for All and urging federal and state legislators representing Anarundel County to work toward enactment of Medicare for All to guarantee comprehensive healthcare for all Americans.
Is there any final discussion? Ms. Rodvian?
I will be super quick. You heard Ms. Holt mention that there are 125 jurisdictions across the United States that have already passed resolutions asking the federal government to take up, to pass Medicare for All. I will tell you, my lucky number is 26, and we would be 126. Make it work for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just out of curiosity, so that I know what bill we're aligning the resolution with, is this in regards to H.R. 3421? Mr. Chairman, may I?
I would have found it in my records, but he knew it off the top of my head. Ordinarily, we don't allow folks to make comments from the audience, but I would have had to look it up, so.
Okay, so I have a few questions. Okay. Do we, I know it was introduced in May. Do we know what committee is going to review the legislation?
So with respect to the specifics of the most recent process, I really don't have any details. If we wanted to ask, you know, ask and get answers on those details, I do believe there are folks in the audience that could, but that is really at the discretion of the chair.
I think if online is accurate, on May 19th, it was referred to the Subcommittee on Health. So unless they're behind, I do believe that's going to be the Subcommittee. But I don't know, and maybe, I don't know if Office of Law would be able to answer this question, who or when the Subcommittee will be holding their hearings. Do we have?
No.
I'm not even sure the Subcommittee would know when they're holding their hearings.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chair?
Technically, this resolution doesn't reference any one bill in the House or the Senate. It's really a statement about the concept of Medicare for All, as far as I can read. It doesn't reference a single particular bill, does it?
I think that's a fair way to describe it. For example, if something didn't happen in the current Congress, I would certainly, the intent of this resolution would be to encourage the next Congress to bring legislation supporting and passing Medicare for All.
Oh, I completely understand that. The reason I asked about what bill the resolution was associated with, that Congress is currently in the process of starting their legislative process, is that, I mean, it's a large bill. So if we're not, if this resolution is not supporting the bill that is before Congress, it's just supporting the idea, I'm just not sure then what are we supporting? Because the bill is 130 pages long. I got through about half of it, and I have about 25 questions that I...
It's really the concept. The concept of instead of the patient getting health insurance and the insurance companies paying for the care, that we all collectively, through our taxes, pay for, pay for the care through our taxes. And so we're cutting out that sort of middleman of the insurance companies. And it results in better outcomes because no longer do you have the insurance companies sort of just making decisions either directly or indirectly, directly saying, we're not going to cover that, or indirectly by, with a cost, with a copayment that's so high that a patient just chooses not to take that care. And, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. It's late. And basically, sort of cutting out that middleman. So the funds that we bring collectively to the table all go to the care. And the care can be better because you don't have someone filtering out what care you do and don't get. You have doctors and healthcare professionals making those decisions. So it's a conceptual, the resolution here is really about the concept, not necessarily any particular bill. And, you know, any particular bill very much could have, you know, thousands and thousands of pages, but we're talking about the concept. I hope that's helpful.
May I?
Please.
Mr. Chair? It absolutely is helpful, but I think in the context of the resolution being indirectly, directly associated with a congressional bill that doesn't have a hearing date yet, we don't know who the chair is going to call to testify. I have a whole slew of questions on the details. I just don't know how, as a council member in Anarundel County, I can vote on a concept without knowing the details that Congress is going to discuss. I just, I will remain consistent in reserving these discussions for the body of government that's going to be reviewing it. I appreciate and I thank everybody for coming out here this evening.
Do you still have a question?
I was just going to respond, if that's all right. I think, I think we can go ahead and say that we like the concept, that we want this concept, that we acknowledge that conceptually this is the right way to go without having to know all of the details. In fact, we do that with our own legislation all the time. You know, we pass legislation, and then the various departments put things into practice. And this is a similar, it's not exactly the same because, you know, we're a legislature, and they're also a legislature. But they're a legislature that has way more resources at their disposal to fill in those details. And we're just saying, hey, make this concept work. We look at it working in so many countries around the world, we should be able to make it work here. And in those countries, better care, lower cost. So I hope, I hope you will support.
You still have a question? I see you're late.
I just want to confirm, if I ran through the bill and asked questions, would there be anybody who could answer? I'm just confirming. Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 43-23.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Abstain.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I feel, I'll be honest, uncomfortable voting on something when there are not known details, and it's at a different level of government from where I am sitting. As a local representative, I'm going to abstain at this time.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
And Mr. Volkey?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
For any affirmative, two abstentions. One, in the negative. Resolution Number 43-23 has been adopted.
Yay!
Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Lisa Rodvian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until October 10, 2023, when we will be meeting these chambers at 9:00 a.m. As the Board of Health, following that meeting, a regular work session will be held.